Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Rockford Area Schools Board Meeting for May 15th, 2023 at 6:30. We'd like to start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Jamie Hillsstrom?
Here.
Beth Rasta, absent. Eric Gordy?
Here.
Amy Edwards, absent.
Jenny Nealon?
Here.
Jessica Johnson here. We have four present, two absent. We do have a quorum of the board.
Thank you very much. We will go to item number two, which is the approval of the agenda. I would appreciate a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented in our packet.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, and a second?
Full second.
Thank you, Ms. Hillsstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by five by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Agenda is approved. Item number three is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? No? We do not? Excellent. So then we will move on to item four with the consent agenda. The consent agenda is presented to us, and I would appreciate a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Hillsstrom, and a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Nealon. Any discussion? All those in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Post. Consent agenda is approved. Item number five, student achievement. We will call... Oh, we have item 5A, which is the FFA celebration. We got a lot of people. We're all right. So we will go... Mr. Ramsden, are you joining them? No, you're not? All right. So we will call the officers of the FFA program that are going to be responsible for presenting themselves.
My name's Cole Sandin. I'm currently the Rockford FFA chapter president.
My name is Trent Nelson. I'm currently the Rockford FFA vice president.
My name's McKenna Bernardo. I'm currently the Rockford FFA sentinel.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, let's watch out here. Just go forward.
Oh, yeah.
There we go. Alrighty, so a couple weeks ago, we had our Minnesota State Convention. So this is a yearly thing. And so, yeah, we had some great achievements, and we're just here to present some of that to you and some of our accomplishments. So first of all, we had 47 FFA members present between the middle school and the high school. This was a great achievement, seeing that at the beginning of the year, we had less than six members. And we had a lot of great accomplishments. We had over 19 teams go to state, and then those of us that weren't competing, we had a lot of workshops, learning new skills to bring back to our chapter and implement that into our team. So, yeah. So, this year, the Rockford FFA got their Minnesota Premier Chapter Award. This is a pretty big accomplishment. So it basically means that Rockford High School is one of the best chapters in the state. And the second-place team was the Rockford Middle School. So this is awesome. Us officers, last summer, on our summer retreat, we spent multiple days working on this thing called a POA. It's called a Program of Activities. So throughout the year, you'll see on our social media accounts, or you'll see us out in the community, and we're doing stuff. I know this past winter, we did our movie night, where we fundraised money for our local food shell. For this past fall, where we did Hunter Safety Day. And so all these activities that we do come together, and they make up our program of activities. And so that's what this award is based on, is how well we did those, how well we met our goals. And it's a pretty lengthy application that we fill out. So this is a super great award to get.
Our state results include ag communications, and they got first in Minnesota. Marketing Plan, which also got first in the state. And our poultry team, even though they got fourth, I mean, third, Courtney Waller got first place individual in the whole state of Minnesota. We also had our middle school conduct of chapter team place second in the whole state. And parliamentary procedures placed silver. And Exemplary Public Speaking took sixth in the state. These are state-winning teams with ag communications and marketing. And our runners-up of conduct meetings team, and our third-place poultry evaluation team. We also have our state champion food service proficiency award, which is Trent Nelson, and our FFA state degree recipients.
So as McKenna said, I did win the food service proficiency, and I brought the award. Thank you. So many of you have thought, or have probably just learned proficiency, or heard proficiency for the first time today. I did a couple of years ago, when Ramsden brought this to my attention. And pretty much what you do is retain all your records from your SAE, or your supervised agricultural experience, which is like pretty much my job. I am like a line cook at D. Michael B.'s in Albertville. So I pretty much take all my hours that I work, and I put this into like this application, and I wrote about what I did and how that connects to the food service award. But there's so many more awards. We had two other members that were in the top three in the state. Cole was one of them, and then we had a different one that was Lillian, but she's not here tonight. So it's super amazing that we had such great success with so many different award areas. Yeah, that's pretty much all we got. We're super, our inherent chapter is super happy with all of our awards and all of the success that we've had this year. Hopefully, for many more years to come, we'll be up here giving more likely presentations of more stuff we won. So, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Excellent. All right, Mr. Ramsden, you're up, because you got the FFA field trip on the next item.
Yeah, I'm way underdressed. I'm so sorry. We have time to stop that at home. So they stole the show for the outfits tonight. So... Cool. So this kind of is a nice segue in, because we just talked about the accomplishments at state. So this is the proposal go to National Convention in October. So again, I like to start off with looking at the mission statements of the different organizations. So the key words I like to point out, the National Convention trip, our personal relationships like learners and global citizens within our district's mission. The National Convention trip really encourages students to build relationships with one another, with their teammates, with everybody in the organization, become lifelong learners through different competitions and events that they're doing, and also global citizens through meeting people from all across the country and world. So this year, the National FFA Convention is April, or April, October 30th through the number 4th in Indianapolis, Indiana. We are for sure, hopefully, planning on sending at least eight students, because those students have qualified to move on to Nationals, but then also hopefully some other students to fill up a van or something to go down there with our chapter advisors to gain some hands-on experiences, some leadership skills, compete in their different events. So as you saw, we had our marketing plan team and our ag communications team move on. That's actually a pretty exciting thing for our school. We have had students move on in the past for creed speaking and extent speaking, but those are individual events. So this year, in March, we've gone with our ag communications team, won state, then our state convention, our marketing plan team advanced as well. So it's pretty exciting for us. It is in Indianapolis, Indiana. I have a hotel block kind of booked off. I haven't put any money down or anything yet, but it's at the convention center that opened up last week, so I called them and made that reservation at the plant sale, actually, the other day. So why we attend, so it has the world's largest youth career expo with over 1,000 vendors, colleges, and businesses that are present every year. We're going to receive the national chapter award. So as Cole and friends mentioned a few moments ago, we did receive the number-one chapter award in the whole state of Minnesota out of 200 chapters this year. So that application, plus the middle school's second-place application, will move on to Nationals, where we're assigned three, two, or one star. So if we receive three star, then we'll get to go onstage at National Convention and receive that for being a well-rounded and successful program. As I mentioned, those are two national qualifying teams, so they'll be competing in ag communications and marketing plan. And Avery and Jessica will be receiving the American FFA degree as well, which is the highest honor that the state can, or the nation can bestow on a member. So the cost, similar to last year, we're working on securing some donors in the community. But housing registration, entertainment fees will be absorbed by the numbers and also some donors in the community. Costs will likely be less than $500 per person. Last year, it was like, I believe, $350 for everything for the whole week. Yeah, that's it. Any questions about the trip, or about FFA, or anything?
How did the plant sale go?
Good. I gotta talk to our, I gotta talk to Sarah. We're gonna try to open up maybe one day this week to do like a flash sale. We still have quite a bit left. But we did sell about $4,000 of the plant, so that was a pretty great start to fundraising for this as well. So, yeah.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Ramsden. All right, then, we're gonna go, I guess, from the oldest to the youngest group. So we'll have Mr. Menard come up and represent the older group of the high school kids. We'll just keep going on that route.
Point of order, are we voting on anything for these?
Nope, nothing tonight. Nothing for FFA tonight. Now, I didn't mean by your age to be the senior member of the team, just by students.
Of course.
Yes, okay. Very good.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to bring forward a couple of our inaugural IB diploma candidates to talk a little bit about their experience from the inside of the program. Obviously, you know, some peaks and valleys, being the first group coming through after our teachers were freshly trained and having to understand, explore all the program requirements and things like that. And so these two, along with their cohorts, have done an incredible job navigating the program, which is strenuous. It is difficult. But they have seen pretty much the very end of the program. The light is at the end of the tunnel. They'll receive their final scores sometime at the end of June, early July, see exactly how they stacked up in order to receive the diploma. But know that the celebration can begin, because all of their examinations are completed, and they have submitted all of the program requirements to be evaluated as to whether or not they've received the diploma. And I tell every diploma student, the work that you did is not wasted on you or anybody that you will come across in your post-secondary education. They are more than ready for what's to come. But enough from me, let's hear from them. So Claire and Maggie, will you come up, please?
Hi.
We'll introduce ourselves.
So I'm Maggie.
I'm Claire. And we are both inaugural IB candidates, so we are both seniors this year.
Yeah, so I think, so we're two out of the eight of us, and I think the biggest thing that all of us took away from this program was it really sort of showed us that like, we can do the hard things, because it was super challenging. There was a lot of stuff that we didn't really understand, a lot of like content and things we had to learn, things that were expected of us that we weren't, or we didn't feel entirely prepared for. But despite of all that, we were able to do things like the extended essay and the task project, and we were able to complete all that. And now that we're sort of on the other side of it, like even though it felt like there's no way we were going to be able to do it at the start, now we're on the other side, and we can sort of see that like, oh, yeah, we did do that. So that's really exciting for all of us.
Yeah, like Maggie said, and like Mr. Menard said, we're pretty much at the light at the end of the tunnel. We have candidates who are taking between 13 and 17 exams in these last three weeks. So I'm doing 13, she's doing 16. And as of right now, how many have you done? Nine, and I've done seven. So we still have six left, but we're getting there. And, yeah, just like Maggie said, is, this was a really, really difficult program, especially in a culture like Rockford, where it's very normal to be involved in everything. Both of us are like highly involved in DECA and a ton of other programs and music. And it was a challenge to keep up with our peers and the involvement within the community, while also taking on this incredibly rigorous program that, like she said, was brand-new. So teachers, students, staff, we were all learning together, and we were all figuring it out as we went, which was challenging. But like Maggie said, we, being at the end now, we're kind of seeing, we're reflecting upon this experience, and we're seeing that, you know, despite what comes out of it, even if we don't get the full IB diploma, we adapted and we changed so quickly. We pivoted so fast as far as our learning styles went, that that's such an incredible asset to have in the world. I know I'm in college, and Maggie can speak to this too, my whole career path has been changed by IB. I am now looking to leave the U.S. for graduate school, because I am looking to go into international public health. And I know Maggie's looking to go into international studies and to work in diplomacy. So I think that just speaks to kind of equate that IB is held for us, and how it really shifted our minds of education to be a little less focused towards just our country, and completely expanded to the global market and the global job search. So I think, yeah, I think it's really incredible. I think there's, again, a lot of ups and downs, but specifically in situations like the EE, I know Maggie, if you want to, you know, expand on this a little bit, but we both wrote an extended essay, which is a 4,000-word thesis on a topic of our choice. And we're even seeing like the experience that we had is going, is improving for the grade under us, and henceforth, the grade under them. So we're seeing that the change is happening very rapidly, and that this progression of peaks and valleys is going to get a little bit more steady as we move on. So, I don't know. Did you want to talk about your EE?
Yeah, so my EE was, I did sort of a comparative study of two works of Lit, The Melody of the Yellow Wallpaper. And I talked about like the patriarchal treatment of women in each of those books, and how that impacted their mental health. And it was a super challenging experience, but like I am so proud of that paper. I wouldn't say I loved writing it, but I love that I did write it and that it's done. And I think it's, the EE for all of us was so beneficial in preparing for college, because we're gonna have to write big papers like those, and no one else in our grade has the experience of writing something that long. Only the eight of us had to do it, and like even though we didn't necessarily, we weren't like hyped to do it in the first place, like now that it's done, I can see the benefit, and I'm really happy that we did have to do that, because it's gonna benefit us in the future.
Any questions for us, or about the IBDP experience?
Do you recommend it to others?
I would.
I would too.
Excellent.
I would say it's definitely an acquired taste. I would say for people who are obviously committed to school, and people who are looking to challenge themselves with school in an unconventional way, because I would say that a lot of the challenges we faced were something that we didn't see coming. And it's sort of like, I don't know how to explain it necessarily as far as like what exactly, what exact challenges we face, but it's a lot all at once, but the beneficial and the growth that we experienced from the program, I could have never predicted. So I would.
So overall, a good value add to your education at Rockford.
Definitely.
Any other questions? No? Very?
Way to go. That's a extremely difficult program to go through, and you guys really took on quite a challenge, so.
Maybe we'll see him on Wednesday night, too, right? Just saying. Excellent. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to 5D with Mr. Paul Warzeka.
Are we good? Sorry, last time I did hit the mic there, and so I'll make sure we're good here. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, excited to be back here. I was just reflecting on the drive-in. It was about a year ago that I was watching anxiously to see if my name was unapproved by the consent agenda. Very grateful to be here before you and reflecting on all the great things that have happened this year. So if we want to go to the next slide here, oh, I have it right here. So I want to introduce you to four people, and although they can't be here with you tonight, these four are leaders among leaders. We had our student council run off, and these are top four eighth graders. Our student council is made up of 10 student representatives, and these are the four that lead the way. Specifically, they are much more than just student council members. To be, they're excellent human beings. They embody everything we try to accomplish, but more than that, many times this year, I've preached over them, and they've been so eager to help out. These four in particular are really changing so many things. When I asked them, what are your favorite parts being on student council? The first thing that I heard, I think is very indicative of their character, it's organizing things that make a difference that nobody really notices. And I absolutely notice, and so do other people as well. They also, you know, close second, getting the opportunity to miss class is up there. So they, this is the crew, I could remind the board, this is the eighth-grade class that did not get the opportunity to go on an overnight trip due to all things related to that pandemic. And their latest venture, they're gonna have a dress-up day here, or dress-up week, May 22nd through 26th, and they will have a eighth-grade-only dance that they are so excited of, and I'm glad we could set them up in a positive. Including, by the way, for those of you who know, or want to know, or care, my favorite day, they have designated here as Wednesday, Day of Decade Day, and the eighth graders have already pegged EEs as their day. In addition, I think it speaks volumes to their leadership. They're in the process of working through an eighth-grade celebration, a way to send them onto a high school appropriately, and they're each gonna, they identify the staff speaker for the most ceremony opportunity, and each of them will take a grade and summarize their experiences as fifth, sixth, and seventh names to remind their classmates of just how much they've gone through in the last four years. So I could do this work without them. I just wouldn't want to. So I want to honor them, their contributions to so many things that existed this year. So, yeah, that's our student celebration.
Excellent. Any questions? No? Excellent. With no questions, then, we can move on to our next item, which is your report.
So again, first and foremost, I want to just acknowledge that, as a representative, I represent a team of very talented people behind me, Annie Butcher in that audience today, that help us really determine these goals, and then also all the action that takes place as part of it. So as we kind of go through, and I know the goals are not new to you, I want to just give you a brief update as we round out the year and look into next year of what each one of those goals looks like. So along this goal of having implemented ALICE protocols for breast practices in situations where class is held outside. So there's a single one pager that every, every member of the school community has, and it just simply goes through the, what are the best practices for inside threats, outside threats with the acronym of ALICE? And in addition, also going through, what are those things that we need to be aware of when we're leaving the building, when we're out during outdoor learning, and then also returning from that outside place? And in turn of that, kind of that same thing, we have really requested that component of some of these security measures. It'd be great if we could have some scrubs or some indicators of if we were to go in lockdown, how would classes who are outside the building know? And so we have communication in the short term, but really trying to move forward with that. In addition to the, we have one remaining drill, because as you know, in schools, there's fall, winter, spring in testing. And so when we get through the testing season, and then that will be really focused on that outdoor. What do we do? What does ALICE look like when we're in an outdoor class setting? And then also kind of reviewing that classroom process for the reunification component that I mentioned earlier in the air. And then a big component is making sure all staff provide training, so all staff can make an all-call from a phone. So we really are more able to alert in a timely manner, and it's really a post-rely on that thing, obviously. Kind of moving on. This one, I could talk to you about for half an hour, but don't worry, I won't. This is one of the most unique things that I think really taught me what Rockford is and what Rockford could be. So this is looking at the greenhouse lot as a curricular tool, and giving the chance to really talk about the partnerships that we have. So we've developed a map of all of the things we have going on at the middle school. As you know, we have a lot. We have a lot of great resources from years of partnership. And we've developed a greenhouse integration that actually goes through and lays it out by month, including standards, specifically with science and ag classes, starting there first. How can we use the greenhouse and be responsible, and be good stewards of our purpose? And then in that, I've spoken highly of the garden, community garden beds. That whole process has been amazing. Currently, we have the beds purchased with ship funding, that is being, that was purchased and then transported buildings and grounds. Beds are rented out by community ed, and it's being assembled by our high school, Woods, of course. So a lot of integration, and just, just a unique opportunity to be who we are, and just have that be shown. In addition, we're grateful for some NAIPAC funding to include a native garden that we did not initially intend to, but I think is gonna highlight this space and contribute to this building goal as well. All right, moving on. Initially, I brought you to the language and this idea of creating, making learning visible. We talked about power standards. We adjusted that language a bit to refer to it as essential learning outcomes. I won't bore you with the details, but essentially, it's how the standards are, some standards, we are talking about standards, some are benchmarks. So to kind of make sure everybody is included in that, we call that essential learning outcomes. But the most important, meaningful outcomes we're looking for, we want to make sure that's visible. And curriculum maps in all of our reporting, which, again, we operationalize quarter four. In addition, we are pleased to have some updates with our academic campus layout, to make sure that it's kind of all in a five-page umbrella, and we're including this, some of that reporting out by standards. And again, that's operationalized fourth quarter, but will be full on in a different format next year. And then we really work to create course descriptions that in previous exist, which will lead to kind of a one, or a document that would, you can, anyone can look up and see what is it that we do. And then also, every course will have a syllabi that is similar to the high school format, that we can make sure that parents are aware of all things, from grading practices to what it is we do, curricular components, classroom procedures, all of those things. So that'll be a reference, and the syllabi has been created, and it'll be referenced next August. So just on the timeline of that. And then we have a lot of things going on. We have, we really depend on leadership, both staff and students. So we have Routine BLT, that's Building Leadership Team. We have representative groups from each grade level, content. And then currently, what we're doing, we went through an R&amp;R process, and I give props, even though she might be mortified of Beth Russell, who's in the room. She is our CIC, and she did a great job of leading, leading us through the Northwest suburban R&amp;R process that gives us really... that gives us really good feedback on where we are. And now we have to take that information and build out a strategic plan with, toward the operational panel where we want to be. So kind of looking at the magnet pillars, our strategic corrections from this body and being able to operationalize that. And so the Building Leadership Team, our staff members have already started that process and looking at those and will continue to work on that throughout the summer. And routine meetings, we started a safety squad. They gave input on secure entry, safety drills, all of those things. They actually were featured in some drills specifically around barricade. We started a culture of kindness, which is really focused on students creating positive notes and letting, giving them space and seeing what happens and what comes of that to build towards that positive school culture and many more, many of which I've already updated you on. And then last, but not least, we really are looking at the, our goal number one, which is really looking at our STEM environmental approach and kind of redetermining key priorities. So what started as a SWOT analysis led to joining MSA. We were able to, as a district, send many representatives to the MSA National Conference and I could tell when they hit a good session because my messages were going like crazy with great ideas, but even better networking with other magnet schools who are going through similar challenges as us, even though their structure and theme might be different. There's a lot to be leveraged with networking, so we're grateful for that. And then we got a chance to visit Northwest Suburban and again, we're going through that three-year reevaluate to use the feedback that we received. We've created an action spec and we have a meeting on the eighteenth with Northwest Suburban to kind of get feedback and do our last part of that process. And then again, we intend to use that to our operational plan and build that to where we want to be in three years and then backwards design for that. And again, kind of ending with the, the direction as we step into next year. Our learning framework really for next year, and it's, I say learning, but it's teaching, learning, it's, we're all learners. And so really focusing whether we're talking about kind of building capacity within students as a STEM learner, as an environmental learner, as a human being. Understanding at the deep level intention, interaction and impact, to understand what it means to explore with inquiry, is it to find something? And how that process truly works, to have evidence-based communication. And then to really understand at a deep level the engineering design process with the what ultimately is stewardship and sustainable, both in the natural environment and the environments in which they live. So in a nutshell, we are, as we head into next year, it's operationalizing that and then being able to create that to all of our students. Well, with that being said, is there any questions?
Lots of work. Any questions, clarifications? No? Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. It's good work. All right. Now rounding back out to the older side of the group. Which, now Rhonda, that's a little far. Mr. Menard, thank you for joining us again.
Good evening. Thank you. Okay, I'm here to talk about the conclusion of the year and where we're at with our site improvement goals at Rockford High School. Again, centered on the five strategic directions set forth by the district. Improving partnerships and programs, aligning proactive training and response protocol for safety and security, improving supports for students, strengthening social practices, processes, curriculum assessment, improving parent community and staff awareness and engagement. With goal one, what we really wanted to do is bring the curriculum to life. And when I came here for a February update, I talked a little bit about some of the things that we were doing, both in and outside of the classroom, to help students connect in their minds. How is what I'm going to, how is what I'm doing in the classroom going to benefit and going to relate to what I want to do when I'm done with my high school career? And so that led to some curricular enhancements. We have three new career-related program pathways that students are really excited about and those will begin next year. We've identified resources in all of our IB units and curriculum maps are beginning to be constructed across all the curricular areas, not only in our IB-related courses, but across the high school in general. And one of the things that I've done since our meeting in February is I initiated a form that our teachers filled out where they, where they had to identify beyond the primary resource of your class. So typically that's a textbook or an ebook. What is it that you use to help reinforce concepts or to help students see the connection with the real world? Whether that's a guest speaker or a website that you refer to or whether that's continued research or other types of support materials that you use. And I should have expected this, but I quickly became overwhelmed with the responses. There were over a hundred and fifty-five unique responses. And that's when I pared it down to just talk about four units out of the year. Of those hundred and fifty-five, some of them were incredibly detailed with links to curriculum standards and YouTube videos and part of the section that talks about the part of the lecture that they're going to talk about, all the way to just kind of very general types of guest speakers that come from certain industries in labor fields. So what we hope to do with that is expand that and see if there are connections across the departments so that we can have more avenues for interdisciplinary learning. One of the requirements actually of the middle years program in our ninth and tenth grade is that we have to develop interdisciplinary units. And so the unit that we submitted is actually a combined effort between our tenth grade English and tenth grade social studies teachers. And so they have paved the way to help teachers understand where some of those intersections might be a little bit more naturally than others. And then using this form, we're going to see if there are others that are rising to the surface for some quick wins as we move into next year. We had a wonderful career fair in the fall. I think I mentioned we had around forty-nine businesses, colleges, universities, trade schools come to our career fair. We have over seventy-five that are registered to come this coming fall, which will be held at the end of October. So we're excited about that growth and the connections that we're making. That, again, this kind of was full circle. We have more opportunities for partnerships and outside of the classroom. The more partners we make, the more people we host at our career fair. We also had kind of a similar version of that for students on the morning where we had a couple of our MCA exams, our ninth and twelfth graders who were not taking exams this year, engaged in visits with county officials, colleges and other career exploration opportunities. So this is just kind of a quick word puzzle of the responses from our teachers when they submitted their ancillary materials. And some of the keywords that come out are students, college, design, IB is on there, curriculum. So this is a example of responses about why they use additional resources or what they intend to do or what effect they intend to create by using such resources. Goal two has to do with our emergency procedures and plans. Last time I talked to you, we had held, held three meetings with our students and they had designed an awareness campaign and they had polled some of their peers about feedback about our drills. It was very helpful to get some feedback since our last meeting on when we integrated our Alice video to parents. We showed our students that as well at the high school. And so we talked a little bit about how our practices and how our approaches to emergency drills needs to be more dynamic. It's not just this one-size-fits-all option. And so it will require some sort of mental training in terms of how we prepare for a drill, depending on where we are, what that emergency might be and how we can move forward on that. We will use this feedback to determine our awareness campaign content for next year. One of the recurring things that our students said in our safety committee was it's hard for a high school age student to take a drill seriously because they feel safe and they think an emergency will never happen. So how do you, you know, the question that we're kind of going to address next year is how do we make them understand the importance of that without, you know, overstressing the emergency, right? And scaring them straight into doing the right thing? So it's more of an awareness campaign, probably some statistics sharing and things of that nature. Here are some of the signs that they made. The students were also very integral in creating an incident report form, not only for anonymously reporting bullying, but did something happen regarding our equipment? Was there vandalism that you saw that occurred? And this is a way that students can anonymously report that on our website. Goal number three has to do with positive school culture and creating a sense of belonging. And we have regular meetings that inform the progress and adjustments. So we had four meetings throughout the year with our leadership and culture committee. And we shared a survey, we talked a little bit about what they believe leadership means, how they believe we can enhance culture. And we talked a little bit about a shared language, some slogans that we want to use that we can kind of fall back on, you know, what is that Rockford way? What would be the phrase that we want to embody in terms of how we want to be treated and how we want to be able to treat our peers at the high school to contribute to a positive culture? And so these are inroads for our Jostens Renaissance SEL curriculum, but also some of the great things that our students are doing organically to help each other feel supported and have a sense of belonging. On purpose, this committee is made up of very diverse friend groups, interest groups. And so one of the things that they reflected on in our meeting last week was they've sensed in themselves the growth and the ability to intervene when perhaps one of their friends is tempted to make a poor choice. And so they, they felt that just by virtue of being a part of something, a part of this group, they feel a little bit more empowered, a little bit more ready to deal with those tricky situations when your friends are going to make a difficult choice and you don't support it. You can step in to not only benefit yourself probably, but also your friend who's about to head down the wrong path. They did also suggest that we do a little bit more training in those types of situations. So next year, we're going to be doing some role playing. We're going to be talking about some of those scenarios where if you encounter this happening or your friend says they might do this, how can you step in or how can you encourage others to step in in order to create more positive results? So scripts, scenarios and tips for positive leadership will be intertwined in this group next year as well. Oh, they wanted to host more fun events and they wanted more of a public facing image too. So we're gonna be loving them up in front of people a lot more next year. It may affect the participants, we'll see. This was their word puzzle for some of their reflection on the IB learner profile trait videos that I'll be talking about in goal five, about what they hope they accomplish by completing the videos and what they hope those learner profile traits look like when acting out in their halls and classrooms. Goal number four had to do with just the growth of our NYPD units in ninth and tenth grade and the growth in year two, which is the first year of our diploma program content this year, but also reflection and refining on year one courses that they taught for the second time this year. And so through PLC focus areas on going IB meetings on Wednesdays, now that we've run through our internal assessment of the IA process, how does that look? You know, you heard a couple of students talk about how they had taken seventeen exams over the last three weeks. And so how can we schedule that to alleviate the pressure of April and May on our students? Not to mention MCA tests, not to mention, you know, spring sports and weather compacting their schedules and things like that. So how can we help them out a little bit by being a little bit more organized as a school? And then of course, using Google Classroom to collect feedback and progress monitoring for our teachers creating those units. Here's the summary of that. Forty-three units were written in the NYPD and the DP. Twenty-five units were reviewed. Eleven of our teachers attended the Minnesota International Baccalaureate Roundtables where they meet with other subject matter experts in their IB courses that are teaching at other high schools in Minnesota. Six teacher trainings are scheduled between now and August for three reasons. There are curriculum updates every five to seven years for IB courses. And so once you're trained, you're not trained for life. There are course updates to those advanced courses that you have to stay current on because the exams themselves do change every seven years as well. Also, just the idea that we have new teachers, perhaps they were new to the district and needed to learn a little bit more IB, about IB before we sent them to training. Or perhaps it's a result of turnover, teachers leaving that were trained and teachers being onboarded that need to be trained prior to examinations. And then finally, just additional offerings. So some of the courses will be offering for the first time, particularly that CP pathway. So the teachers need to be trained so that they can help students succeed and actually obtain the diploma or certificates or certification. Goal five then is the framework to explain IB through the learner profile traits. In February, the groups were chosen, we could already launch two. Now we have all nine of them up live on the website. And here's some screenshots from them. For kids, by kids, these videos were very kind of person-on-the-street type of production quality, but it was taking their words and that's exactly what I wanted was how do we take this from a very verbose type of language that's in all the printed material and help them summarize what they believe it means to each other? And they've done a very good job with that. I'm gonna pause here in case you have any questions or feedback on these SIP goals before I move into an IB update.
All good?
Okay. Here's the update. So this is year five of the five-year grant that was awarded to us. And here are some of the things that we wanted to accomplish. In our middle years program, we were authorized in May of 2022. Almost exactly a year ago. Forty-three units were written and twenty-five reviewed this school year. Rubrics were developed to articulate the IB criteria on performance set against RHS criteria and Minnesota state standards. Some of those rubrics needed a lot of work to be able to fit in with the requirements of the IB middle years program and others were pretty hand in glove. New staff trained on how to write unit plans and we piloted our NYPD grading in two courses. And so that, if you remember, kind of early on with the onboarding of the middle years program, we were wondering how does the IB criterion talk with a Rockford High School transcript? And we're, we are kind of playing with that in two of our tenth grade courses in social studies and English and we're taking a look at how we want that to look. So we're piloting that in those two courses. And then we'll be launching that across the content levels in ninth and tenth grade next year. That is one of the requirements for recertification for NYPD. And for the past two years, every tenth grade student completed a personal project. And that is incredible based upon what we're hearing from other schools who have about a fifty percent completion rate. In the diploma program, we were authorized in March of 2021, so a little over two years ago. And again, the reason for that was so that we could begin those diploma program courses so that our diploma candidates were ready to take the two-year program. So we bumped that up to front burner. We reviewed and reflected our course outlines and we're continuing to weigh the internal assessment and external exam remarks from IP. So we already have some of those first year course comments and the assessment markings back from last year. We're really interested and excited to receive the year two feedback so that we have a full scope of how our students are doing and what levers do we need to pull to perhaps be even more successful across the board in our IB courses from an external grading standpoint. Again, our first graduating class with nine full diploma candidates. First full year of internal assessments, as I mentioned. Kind of ran the gamut of several internal assessments this year. Fifty students tested in a hundred and forty-two exams over three weeks in May. Fifty students tested in a hundred and forty-two exams over three weeks in May. So one of the things I wanted to stress here, especially about the diploma program, it's incredible that, you know, we have nine students going for the full diploma. It's equally incredible that fifty of our juniors and seniors took a hundred and forty-two exams. So you're averaging about three exams at the highest level of learning at a high school that you can do. Meetings with all tenth graders and their families. So anyone interested in learning about the full diploma have been occurring since December when we registered for courses. And we do have a number of students that are interested in pursuing it. The career program, we were authorized in March of 2021 and since then, we've created three new pathways. So for total business, CNA, landscape design and vet tech. All the pathways include the opportunity to earn college credit and/or certification in those fields. In October of 2022, as I mentioned, it was our first career fair with forty-nine vendors. In October of 2022, as I mentioned, was our first career fair with forty-nine vendors or college reps. 2024 will feature our first graduating class of CP students, and we've also met with all 10th grade students and families who indicated an interest in being a CP student for their 11th and 12th grade years. Curriculum updates, technology updates, our teachers are loving their clever touchboards and curriculum is literally coming to life on fully interactive TV panels. Several online curricula have been purchased and used for our DP courses. We've done a lot marketing in and outside the school, so IB signage at our main office door and our activities entrance, as well as inside the school in the common school store concessions area. Our IB learner profile flags, as well as our district core values on the light poles as you enter the campus have been another focal point. Professional development, so eighty-seven staff members, including school board members and former superintendent, have been trained in the IB program. The IB grant has several requirements, so two to three times per month, we're having special meetings, talking about how we can cover those requirements in existing meetings or curtail any sort of distractions and make sure that what we're setting as priorities for the building also address those requirements so that we can meet those. And staffing, as you know, we've kind of evolved as the program has evolved in terms of our coordinator, our technology position, and some of those core component coordinators, so the CAS project that Ms. Earl's mentioned, the extended essay, and theory of knowledge and personal project. Here's kind of a timeline, milestone map looking forward. So as you can see, this is the final year of our grant, which it will end in October. And then there is one year of carryover that we are applying for currently where we can take our existing funds that will be there in October and then we can extend them during the 23, 24 school year. And so instead of all funds being eligible to be spent by October of '23, we were going to request that we spend all those funds by October of '24. After that, you see no more bubbles and it turns into district support. So that is another thing that we will have to cover in terms of how are we going to sustain and support the program financially, programmatically, those sorts of things. And of course, the work that's being done in CP, DP, we were prepping for authorization, we were authorized in '21, we're working on our first three years of implementation. And then the NYPD prepping, we were authorized implementation. You see the word strengthen, self-study, evaluation, visit, and reflect and adapt. We would prepare for a full evaluation visit of all three programs in the fall of 2027. So that is kind of the next big hurdle is growing these programs to a level and addressing all of the different requirements that IB has set forth for us to demonstrate that we can continue to sustain and have a very successful IB program at those three levels.
Mr. Merritt, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you go back a slide?
Yes.
Twenty-seven, eight eval visit, is that going to be as intense with staff and community and as had been previous in the authorization years?
Good question. In terms of information requisition, yes. In terms of the visit itself, it is somewhat condensed, so like a day and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
And so the continued implementation requires support with curriculum, technology, professional development, and staffing. Again, they're calling it a no-cost extension and it's being submitted to the federal government to carry over the remaining dollars for a sixth year for our IB grant. That is the IB update.
And just for all three programs that have to go through the same evaluation process?
Yeah, so good question. Chair Gordy, we actually requested that we put all three programs on the same cycle or as you can imagine, CP and DP would have been, would have come to for the evaluation in '26, '27. So they kindly gave us an extra year so we can have all three programs evaluated at once.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Menard?
My only thing is, and this is not even for you as much as it is just for us to think about, I mean, is there grants out there for IB support? Is there anything available and, I mean, since it's so expensive, the training is expensive and when they redo their curriculum every so many years, of course, we're falling on that sounds early, like earlier than we'd like, I guess, but just if there's anything.
One of the things that may, Director Johnson, one of the things that may help us in the long term is the fact that we have the IB program. And when you look at the surrounding districts, they do not. So it is a draw for Rockford, for the Rockford community to have IB as a standing program. And so promoting that program and encouraging students like the students you saw earlier today who are highly motivated and looking for that challenge at school and that global experience, really promoting and marketing that experience because again, the surrounding districts do not offer IB.
Excellent. Any other questions? Very good. What I would like to do, since you're here and Mr. Ramsay is also still here, if you look at your board packet, there was an oversight that the FFA Nationals overnight application was just added. So there is under five B, the FFA field trip, so if you have the opportunity to open that up real quick. Yeah, after fresh your board packet. And as I, and I view that item, yeah, there's Mr. Ramsay and as he said in the, in his PowerPoint presentation, I don't know if Mr. Ramsay or Mr. Menard needs to address any of the questions, but it looks to be about ten to fifteen students to Indianapolis, dates of the trip, five days in school and two non-school days. And it looks to be about $700, you know, donations and $100 by student. Mr. Ramsay, is there anything you need to add to that? Very good. Mr. Menard, you okay? Ms. Dean, you all right?
Absolutely.
All right, so with that addition, I would like to go back at this time.
Yeah, thank you.
And looking at the agenda in five B, since we had overseen, or now have had that addition to it, does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns about moving forward with that item or going back to that item?
Do we need to amend the agenda for that? Like officially?
I think we can roll back into an item as long as it's there. Yep. So any discussion then on that? All right, so there is an object for consideration needing action with the FFA overnight with the application that is now in our, in our agenda, going back to item five B. So I'd appreciate a motion for that approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the FFA field trip for the national convention.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signal of five, I say aye.
Aye.
Pose. And that is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Menard, thank you, Mr. Ramsay. Thank you, Mr. Warzeka for your detailed reports, truly appreciate it. Congratulations again on all the hard work and the plant sale, which Ms. Director Johnson, sounds like she's going to be visiting. Open checkbook, we'll just read the rest off. No, I'm just kidding. All right. So now the next is a resolution to certify the graduates and that goes to Superintendent's office or Mr. Menard, one of the two?
Well, the resolution to certify the list of graduates is an annual occurrence, of course, and Mr. Menard is here to, to accept that, that resolution on behalf of school district.
Excellent. So as stated, it says be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number eighty-three authorizes Rockford High School Principal Paul Menard to grant high school diplomas on Friday, June 2nd, 2023 to all Rockford area school district students that have met the state of Minnesota and Rockford area school district graduation requirements. That is the resolution in front of us. I would appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to certify listing of graduates as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hillstrom. And as it's a resolution, or sorry, in a discussion, none, resolution, ma'am clerk, please call.
Jamie Hillstrom?
Aye.
Eric Gordy?
Aye.
Jamie, uh, Jenny, Nealon?
Aye.
Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you so much. And then we will be able to move on to the Director of Teaching and Learning Report, Mr. Deniker. Thank you, Mr. Menard.
Thank you, Ms. Menard.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. So two topics that we'll get to in tonight's teaching and learning update, just for a moment, I do want to go back to the consent agenda just to provide a little bit more information. Board members would have noticed there was a resignation on the board agenda for tonight at the, at Reams regarding our music department. And so that teacher has been predominantly teaching piano for the last several years and piano, I know, was a program that was brought on by Principal Nyhous and about 10 years ago or so, I think, predates me in the district regardless.
It would be our seniors, if you may interpret.
Okay, so about 10 years. And, and so Principal Nyhous has discussed this opening with Superintendent Dean and myself, and strategically, she's going to be posting for two, two positions with the idea to hire the best candidate through two postings. One would be to simply replace the piano teacher at Reams. The other would be to advertise for a theater or theater and dance position. Both are relevant and appropriate under Minnesota Department of Education standards, the new art standards which go into implementation starting in the fall. Do call for elementary students to have access to two areas of arts instruction during the course of their grade level, those four being visual arts, music, dance, and theater. And so in some ways, in fact, going to dance or theater will actually diversify the access for elementary students in the arts. And so, so the, so Reams will be posting again for replacement strictly piano and then also a dance slash theater teacher. There's actually three different licenses in the dance theater. There's dance alone, theater alone, and then dance and theater, again, all licenses by Pell's view. Any questions from the board on that? I just wanted to point that out to the board.
And we're looking to fill one or the other of those corrections.
Yes, we'll find the best candidate, similar to what the high school did when we posted for, we had a tech ed opening, we posted for A and tech ed and hired the best candidate that we found.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
All right, so the two topics to give the board an update tonight from the teaching and learning department. The first is the recently concluded MCA assessments that were, that we did, and then also the graduation rate for 2022, so going back in time 11 months, but that is MDE's timeline and those were released at the end of April. So starting with MCAs, first I want to acknowledge the heavy lift that was done by many people across the district and many more names that are, that are listed here, but these were the district in building leads on conducting MCAs. I just wanted to make sure that those people receives a public recognition. And so district support, the teaching and learning department, Connie Ward, Kevin Neff, at Reams, Principal Nyhous, and then also Shay in the media center. Shay was critical in coordinating the day-to-day operations of MCAs at Reams. For the middle school, Principal Warzeka and Carrie Vinsfeld, Vinsfeld in the media center, supported a lot of testing. And then Monica Palmer in the, in the main office, again, booth coordination, day-to-day programming for MCAs. And then at the high school, similar, Principal Menard, and also one of our two counselors at the high school, Kellyanne Lockrum, to build the, again, the nuts and bolts of the day-to-day with MCAs. So I want to make sure that those people are highlighted. Reminder that our, we do have a district assessment calendar, which is mandated by the Department of Education, at least in the case of, well, actually in the case of all assessments that we do, but primarily focused on MCAs. This calendar is posted every August as per statute. We can amend that calendar, so you see, for instance, this is a screenshot of the MCA calendar with two updates in red that were updated earlier this spring based on feedback from those buildings. The assessment calendar, just as a, going back kind of zooming up to 30,000 feet, the assessment calendar is put together really coordinated by the teaching and learning department, but purely at the discretion of the building principals, so the building principals meet with their team and identify with teaching and learning how and when to conduct these as best as possible. Changes for this year, one of the things that we did, again, strategically, was to start with a small group before going to building-wide testing that allowed us to verify connections, make sure there were no unexpected technological issues or anything like that before committing to a full-grade or building testing session. There were several reported, both myself and Kevin have been teaching and learning around some group emails, and there were several testing staff moves across the state, especially early on. There was a couple of things regarding Pearson and district networking pieces in other districts not understanding that caused the staff. So we avoided that and we again started with doing one small group in one building as a test group. Stats overall for the district, we tested over 2,000 students on MCA assessments, which again, per statute, are provided to students in grades three and three-eleven in math, reading, and/or science based on the grade level. At Reams, we had over 444 exams, the middle school had 1,246, and the high school had 346. The plus there is that those were numbers as of midweek last week and we're still making sure that we're tallying the makeups that were done in time as well. So over, well over 2,000 tests were conducted. Not tested, we did have some students who were not tested, who were otherwise eligible. Five students did not test based on medical reasons, with concussion being the most common. Very frequently with concussion protocol, we try to avoid screen time. And since these tests are given on computers, that was obviously very logical and necessary for those five students. We had two foreign exchange students who do not test, again, based on MDE, the process guide. And then we had 43 parent opt-outs, which is a decent number. And breaking that down a little bit, I want to just kind of point out, because there was some telling pieces to that, and I think we might know where that came from, but just so the board is aware. So we had zero opt-outs at Reams, we had three at the middle school, and then we had 40 at the high school. Now, I just want to pause because we do as a district, and I know all of our building leaders and the teams associated with MCA testing, we try to encourage students to take the MCA test. We are not trying to create the idea that this is optional, to create loopholes, anything like that. We cannot mandate that they take the MCA, but we try to provide every incentive possible that students are taking the MCA exam. Interestingly, and just again, the data is up there for grade 11, what we had was 12 students opted out originally from taking all MCAs. Then following the science exam, we had another 19 opt-out. And so likely there was a little bit of chatter going on amongst the group at that grade level regarding the ability to opt-out. And so that we saw that 19 after the original 12. The 12 were largely PSEO students, then the 19 followed after that. So unfortunately, we did have 31 opt-out at the 11th grade level. Grade level, last month, their grade level had 89 tested math, 99 in science, and then students transferring out of the district between science and math also impacted those numbers. We did see several students, and we always see students transferring out over the course of the school year, but we did see some students impact that number as well.
I have a, just so I'm clear, when students opt-out, that counts kind of negatively against the school, right? Is it neutral or is it?
So it doesn't count against, I mean, there's no numerical penalty or anything like that? When we look at the group who opted out, however, we're looking at a group, in this case, the majority of those 12 original opt-outs were PSEO students, so theoretically students who can handle college-level material. We want those students tested, right? And so in and of itself, does it penalize the district? No. But when you have students who might support improving our averages, yes, it does. And of course, we want all students to test, we cannot just, you know, good students, bad students, we want everybody to test. All right, we did have two student refusals that took place. And then we also had a number of students transferred in during the testing window. We had 22 students transfer in while we were conducting MCAs, 14 of which we were able to get enrolled appropriately through Pearson and MDE and test. Eight, however, came in with insufficient time to post that testing window. And again, with this group of students, we did try to make sure that we did everything we could to get students tested who were here, to the point that we had two students finish up on the very last day of, that the window was open with about an hour to spare, working one-on-one with staff to complete those assessments. We did have one invalidated test, and I won't go into the grade level to provide anonymity for that student, but unfortunately, we did have a student who, at the elementary level, who had a worksheet that was underneath. who had a worksheet that was underneath their laptop and was discovered by the doctor. And so thankfully, that student wanted to do well, but you can't break the rules to do well. So preliminary results, we are, this, the test data and information is embargoed until August, because these results, the results that we have access to right now are preliminary, they are subject to revision at the state level. If you look back at our, like, last year and even the year before, the preliminary numbers that we have do change a little bit between, you know, the times they're completed and August, when they are rolled back out. So typically, across grade levels, a percent, a fraction of a percentage point or two up or down based on questions that MDE might throw out because of problems they found in the questions, other things that come up in the testing process. So right around state fair time is when we expect to have the embargo lifted, but we don't have an actual date until later this summer. I believe that's the last slide on MCAs. Any questions from the Board on MCAs? So all in all, we had a great MCA season, I will share that. We are, myself and Kevin Neff, we are going to be with each of the three building principals to talk about what went well, where are things that we can improve on, because we want to engage in continuous improvement. And then we'll also be meeting with our special education coordinator, same topic, same agenda, where we can, you know, do better in this process in years to come. All right, thank you. Moving on to the last piece of the agenda for Teaching and Learning Update, is graduation rate released. So at the end of April, most people who paid attention to the news that week knew that the graduation data from 2022, the class of 22, was rolling out. And so you see, this is just a screenshot from NPR's news article on this, and it's posted April 25th at 6:00 a.m. That's when the embargo was lifted. So NPR, just like all the other news outlets in the state, would have had this information about a day ahead of time, fashioned articles, and then automatically released at 6:00 a.m. Of note on this slide is the state average for all students. I'll magnify it on this slide. So 83.6%, of students in Minnesota were able to graduate, the class of 22 were able to graduate within four years. For our district, as has been typical, we're about 10% higher. So we had 93.1% of our students from the class of 2022 graduate on time. That's 108 of 116 students. Unfortunately, even though that's a very good score, unfortunately, we did not meet our goal that we set forth in our World's Best Workforce Goal. Our World's Best Workforce Goal this year was based on the preceding five years of graduation rate data. Our goal had been 93.7%, and I put it up there, we missed by one student, which is really an accounting error in all. And what I mean by that is realistically, that's how MDE calculates. There's an algorithm that they use based on, you know, when students completed, which school they completed, if they transferred within, how long they're at each school, et cetera. And so, you know, we might have coded something wrong, or MDE might have coded something wrong. I mean, it really could be an error. But, so we were pretty darned close, but we did not beat it on a black and white. Interestingly enough, our goal for next year, because our World's Best Workforce Goal is based on that rolling five-year average, our goal actually goes up next year from 93.7 to 94, because the class of 2018, I think, would be, drops off the rolls, and that was a lower graduation rate. So we're raising the bar, even though we did not quite beat it this year. And then just the visual on our graduation rates. And so, yeah, 2018 will drop off, and then we're calculating next year between 2019 and 2023. And you see that those graduation rates locally here have been very static, 92.9 as a low, 95.9 is the high. Any questions from the Board regarding the release of the graduation rate data?
Let's put, so extended school year opportunity for the seniors, right? So they finish off their graduation requirements in the summer. That is not considered on-time graduation, or is that considered on-time graduation?
Well, previously, I can tell you it was. I'd have to go back and look at how MDE defines that now. I would expect, and I don't quote me on this, but I would expect that there's a little bit of grace given if a student finishes up in the course of summer programming. So on that note, we are providing two sessions of summer programming for high school students, one in June and one in July. And we did have very good turnout last year. So we do have students in that scenario, and, you know, hopefully, they can finish up. The majority of the students we did have in the class of 2022 did not graduate, or I shouldn't say the majority, but there was about half who were still with us at that time, and half who had left us prior. So we had access, we didn't have access to all of them.
Not that that was a leading question, but that's where I was hoping you'd show. Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions? There, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Denneker. All right, that means we get to go to our QCOM annual report.
Chair, can we just make a first note that Amy Edwards has come to our meeting, and at that time was 7:34 p.m. She got here.
Excellent, thank you so much, appreciate it. Now we can go on to our annual QCOM report.
Okay, so our annual QCOM updates, so we have actually three things to cover in this section of proceedings tonight. The first is an update regarding the QCOM plan and progress during the current school year, 2223. Then there'll be presentation about the proposed plan for next year. And then this is an action item, because there is a local levy involved. So QCOM is funded through state aid as well as local levy, and so the Board would want to take action, make sure that this draft plan is approved. And the Board did have the draft plan, the red line version of it, you can pack it as well for review, along with the proposed budget. You'll notice that the proposed budget almost equals the modern revenue, because we want to make sure that we're, you know, again, just being fiscally minded. So before going any further, because at this point, I'm going to hand it off to the two people who will be presenting, so two of our eight team members. Each of our buildings has a QCOM advisor, and our QCOM advisor at the elementary is Katie Folger. At the middle school, it's Beth Russell. And at the high school, long-term subbing for our QCOM advisors, Ms. Cosgrove is Kathy Matts, and Kathy Kinnatt joins us tonight, but Katie and Beth are here. So Katie, Beth, if you want to come up.
Okay. Thank you for having us. I'm Beth Russell, and the middle school advisor. This is my last year as the building advisor. Coming in and out on a rotating basis. I'm taking my place will be Hannah Oliverius. She's fifth grade, science. And I'm Katie Folger. I am the elementary advisor. This is my first year in the position, so I've learned a lot. Sad to see her going, because she was very helpful to me on the first year. All right, so we're going to go through some of the core components. The first one is career advancement, teacher leadership. So through QCOM, there are a lot of opportunities for teachers to kind of expand their leadership roles. So PLC leader is one area. Their job is to be in charge of the professional learning community that they are with. They send out agendas, they are the line of communication between the advisor and their PLC. They also do one round of observations throughout the year. Observation coach is another area. They do two rounds of observations for up to six teachers. Mentor would be somebody who is helping a new first-year or second-year teacher. And then the building advisor. So those roles, most of them change yearly, and as Beth mentioned, the advisor role is every three years. So the next part is the PLC or the job embedded of professional development. So in each building, we meet weekly, mostly Thursday mornings, and it's a chance for us to collaborate, communicate with the teachers who work with the same group of students. So that looks a little different, depending on the building and how it's structured, but this year specifically, we worked really hard on putting into place the MTSS model. And so we wanted to make sure that we were working with teachers who share the same students, so that when we were looking at tiered instruction, we could talk about our tier one instruction that we were delivering to all students and how it's going, and then also looking at students who might need the tier two or the tier three instruction, and how we can, you know, make sure that's happening across the curriculum for them. Okay, all right. And then throughout the year, we have three observations done for each teacher, and it is done by two different teacher leaders within the building, either an observation coach or a PLC leader. And over the past three years, it used to be more evaluative, and now it's kind of based more on a rubric. Each teacher who's being evaluated chooses an area that they'd like the observer to focus on, and then there's a pre and a post meeting, and a lot of feedback goes back and forth between the observer and the observee. And it's consistently rated as the highest form of, in the feedback forms, it's the highest ranked item that teachers feel is very influential, important, to be evaluated by their peers, and then to get that feedback from the teachers. The general program impact here, all of these things put together, we feel, and teachers have responded, that they feel like it is really improving their teaching practices, that's allowing them to collaborate, and it's really, gives them a place to give a lot of feedback. With this kind of feedback in place each quarter, we do different feedbacks based on PLC, where teachers can fill out forms based on how they feel things are going with the structure. They give feedback about their teacher leaders, their coaches, their PLC leaders, the advisors. And then we take that feedback to our core committee. Our core committee is our three building advisors, a building representative, our MTSS specialist, our principal representative. For the past three years, it has been Mr. Paladar, and then our director of teaching. And we take that all back to our core committee, and we, it's Miss Rezeka coming up. He was very excited and took a new card. He actually, he was excited. He told, very excited to learn more about QCOM. But we take it back to our core committee, and then we really try to formulate, you know, how can we better improve our program, based on the feedback that our teachers have given us. Once we do that, and we make the red line plan, we bring it back to our teachers to vote on. And this year, it was a unanimous vote, that all teachers supported, wanted to continue moving forward with the QCOM program. I think that, here's the staffing. And then these are some of the updates that were in as part of the plan, and they're also in the red line, kind of just changing a little bit of, kind of, the structure and the topics. And then you can see all the different components, a few slight, small changes based on observations, but really moving forward very similar to years past. So we feel, we feel very proud that our teachers get a lot out of the program, and they feel like they're becoming better teachers because of the QCOM program. Any questions for us, as the building advisors?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Thanks, Dan, please.
Yeah, that's very nice.
And I just think there's an action item.
Do you want to present the?
Sure.
Thank you.
You know, and so, one thing I just want the Board to hear once again, is the teachers, you know, they have to annually vote on any changes to the plan, and the vote was unanimous in favor. And so that's, that's not typical. Usually, I shouldn't say usually, but sometimes these votes in various districts can be pretty contentious, because there is an ask of the teachers as a part of this process and part of this participation. So the fact that, you know, Katie and Beth, and Kathy and Stephanie have led the QCOM program that's so well-received by the teachers is something to really be proud of. So the ask for the, the action item for the Board is that, looking for the Board, to approve the proposed 2023-24 QCOM plan as outlined in the agenda proceeding.
Excellent, so there is an action item in front of us for consideration. I'd appreciate a motion for the 2324 QCOM plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2324 QCOM plan.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Any discussion? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, moving into six, fiscal responsibility. Next item is resolution of acknowledgements of contributions and donations. Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Chair, party. Well, once again, here I am acknowledging the contributions from our community, and the list gets, it feels like it gets longer every month. And to acknowledge, again, I can't, I don't have enough words to add each month, other than, I am going to call out the anonymous donors. I mean, yes, we have families who donate, we have organizations that donate, our boosters are a staple draw, but oftentimes, we'll have anonymous donors who just want to give to our community. Not that they're looking for any type of acknowledgement or pat on the back, they just want to provide support to our kiddos, and to our teachers, and to our programs. And so I am going to call that out this month, because several anonymous contributions. But again, when I look at this list, it just, it makes my heart feel warm, that we live in and work in a community that is so supportive and so generous, not just with their financial contributions that we bring forward every month, but just the time that, that, you know, parent volunteers, community volunteers, that are not on this acknowledgement sheet. So just publicly, just thank the community for their generosity.
Excellent, thank you so much.
And this is an action item.
This is an action item and a resolution, so I would appreciate a motion to accept the contributions as listed.
I will make a motion to accept the acknowledgement of contributions.
Thank you, Ms. Neal, and add a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hillstrom, any discussion? Say, non-resolution call, please, Ms. Menard.
Jim Hillstrom?
Aye.
Eric Gordy?
Aye.
Amy Edwards?
Aye.
Jenny Nealon?
Aye.
Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
That is a unanimous vote.
Excellent, thank you so much. Moving on to the transportation contract, letter six B, Mr. McNulty? And this is an item that was provided to us for review prior to the Board via email, so I appreciate you sending that to us.
Yes, you're welcome. And thank you, Board. I wanted to just give you a little context on there. So back a couple months ago, we put out an RFP, a request proposal, although advertised as following through as the initial stage of the contract with 4.0. I kind of appreciate, seeing if we had any other takers, or which ones here, anybody who would give a proposal? We did receive one, which came from 4.0, our present contractor, which I expected. And so what I had before review is that we submitted that, and then I actually sat down with Mr. Henneck, who was here behind me, along with Mr. Becker, and just kind of talked through the contract, you know, did a little, I would say, negotiating, as we kind of walked through it, and made some changes, so to speak, not much, but we kind of went back to the fact that the contract had been working well. We had a few items we wanted to discuss. We came to conclusion that we would look at a six-year contract, which I'm proposing to the Board, and then we were looking at about a four, it's a 4.7, you can give a take from 100% or whatever, increase of, if you're familiar with, of course, the supply chain thing out there, and transportation, they've been hammered, and so I did some checking with other schools that utilize 4.0. I'll follow with the range, up to 6.7%, depending on the contracts, a lot, it could be a lot of differences, so I didn't dig into that. So the other change we had then was the lease payment on our building to $25,000, and those are the two main components, really, that changed from the original contract. And so the question that I'm recommending, that we afford with a 4.0 contract for the next six years.
Excellent. Does anyone have questions for Mr. McNulty? Very good, as this is an item for consideration, I appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transportation contract with 4.0.
Thank you, Ms. Neal, and add a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, is first and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I'm just going to say my comment from earlier. Wish the increase could have been 4.0.
So 4.7, come on.
We'll work on that for the next six years.
Sorry, had to say it.
Excellent. All right, so with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on, proposed budget, six C. And this is an item that we had discussed previously at our work session in detail. Mr. Hart was in attendance as well to help answer any questions and assist in this presentation as well.
Yeah, and Mr. Hart touched a little more on some of the rules and so forth of operating levy, referendums and rules and that. So he'll be continuing his talk and conversations with the finance committee and the board. So what I have in front of you is, again, a little take, we looked at it a bit last month. We've got some changes, the finance committee, they looked at it here a couple weeks ago. And we talked about in the work session is as we're making our budget set up for June approval from the school board and continuing working through some of the little, the little things inside of it. These are some of the assumptions and things that we have looked at. And just to note again from the earlier talk, for anybody who's not here, that the legislature is also, you know, moving forward as it's possible to approve things. It could change our assumptions as we get done, but we won't with that for another couple of weeks. So we've got to go with what we have right now. And so what I've got in front of you again is to take a look at a few items that we made on our budget proposal as of right now. And there will be some areas that might move a little bit here the next month. So student enrollment projection again, what you have in front there is if you look at the projections we have for next year based on the numbers we have now, the kindergarten enrollment stuff that the SNAH brings to us and some of the other factors of just the numbers as the old demographic studies that have not moved up or down. They actually went down from the pandemic and they have not recovered fully. So we are kind of looking at a steady enrollment projection that drives your revenue. When students come, we get more revenue, they don't come, even less. And so utilizing that, we have pretty much a flat set on that revenue. Obviously, the legislature could improve the percentage of coming in, so that would just change on the per student basis. So nothing drastically changed there. Good problem of courses that comes out in August, which can happen and, you know, fifty more kids show up or whatever. But this is what we're projecting on. A few items then on the revenue change to go with that right there is we did a 4% projection revenue because that was a lot of the talk, we took that. That looks like that's the number that's actually going to come through for this next fiscal year. The second one up there, the provision for cost new mandates, that'll come. Come in the details of the bills and so right now we just didn't put any for that. But usually that's a lot more of what you see, that work on the central office and so forth. And then the big one that is your biggest jump of anything that really did a good, good thing for the revenue side was the compensatory, the free meals gone for one year. And all the applications becoming, I should say, filled out in a much larger percentage. And then of course with some of the new rule of how you could obtain those numbers for the free reduce. That jump is going to happen for next year. That is already probably in place, about that number of 379,000. And that's great. How it goes from there, it comes out on the bills and what happens on the free meals as those are being put back in place by state. And so they're supposedly holding us harmless for the next couple of years, but we'll make sure that holds on, holds on there, so. And then a few of the other little items, the title grants and so forth. But the big two drops in the revenue come from our grants, specifically the ESR grants, which are going to be, it can actually go through partway up next year, but we will be expending those at the end of this fiscal year as we finish up those withdrawals. And then the IB grant, there's some more details will be coming on, looking at that. I have to also met with Ms. Gordy, Mr. Dur, excuse me, Mr. Menard. And after he was talking, he was wanting to kind of fill in. We're kind of going through the details of our last draw, we'll do in June and carryover. But just regarding the added care over now at the cost of the IB grant moving forward. I know Amy had some questions with that and the, and the operating levy, which we touched on, I'll get back to that. We're talking without any of the major curriculum changes or training that could happen because that can fluctuate, maybe talking another couple hundred thousand estimate right now. Today, that will be a cost for here. Next year, won't be too bad of that, depending on the carryover, make sure we got that. And Mr. Dan Akers also did some work with another grant, recovering some of those costs. But that is, that is a sustained cost that will go on from personnel and training and so forth. Those are already permanent, so you're talking a minimum of 200,000 a year, that's going to be good for. But that's part of, I think the decision that Mr. Hart was here for the work session really goes on the programming. And I think Mr. Menard touched to that, all important, that IB programming is to this district and the students. So this is just a fiscal part, it really comes down to decision of what we want to do for the kids, so. So an overall change of about $330,000 on the plus side and that's on the revenues only. So jumping to kind of our, what you'd say, expense side, some of the moves that have already been taken care of by the district and the school board. Specifically, I kind of hit the fourth one down there, your counselors, that was tied to the ESR grants, which those monies were. And then some of the other personnel reductions or writing the shifts or changes that we have going forward. If you're not familiar with, of course, financing and expenses in school, 70% of that comes from the staffing and the people. And so we have to make changes that most of that tends to come from the people. The next page also just notes a couple other things right there. Things that we, say, got to count for or maybe can't always control. We have negotiations coming with our largest group, the teachers. And so you're assuming there's going to be some kind of increase there. On the expense side, all those other ones, Medicare, FICA, TARA, they climbed, those are really all driven outside of us by governmental rules and laws there. And then the big one that you got to assume we cost, we kind of just went with a number of their percentage. It's kind of hard to say, but we're sitting good now, but that doesn't happen until mid-year. So you kind of have, you had a good year or half, good, half year, you would say, on the health insurance cost for this year. And who knows what that'll be next year, it could jump up drastically or it could go level. But odds are usually you see at least a five to 10% increase on that, so we're counting for that in there too. And then a couple other items right there, areas we just have to adjust. Again, I kind of already talked about that with Mr. Dan Akers, the chief of immigration, that IB grant. And the bottom one right there is Chuck Hurd again, who's been a multiple role person for us in both finance and HR. So his role is being reduced, he's been working for a couple districts for the last couple months. And he's going to kind of try to re-retire here this summer. Spent a lot of time with his grandkids, I said this last weekend, he was here today, he had six of them at home. And wants to spoil them a little more, so. He's more of an on-call setting for us right now, which he is still helping out with Cindy and I. Because he was a big part of that and so the knowledge he has, one, just he's been doing it for four years. And two, that he kind of took a lot of that and he's kind of bringing us along on what he did and how it was done. So we continue to move in a right direction with all our payroll and our finances, so. That'll be a little savings we can save here. Few of the, what you'd say uncontrollable items, you know, that we have is utilities. And if you have your own utilities, I don't know how they've gone, but most of them have gone up quite a bit. Insurance for cyber stuff, I don't, Mr. Keenness, again, I have a call on that, but that's increasing. That transportation cost is actually 4.7 and not 4.0, not, or 4.5. I might hold that one to them in six years, I see if that'll work.
Maybe it's that in six years.
Yeah, so. The big part is, and I kind of note the last, no increases to the budget, those aren't drastic, huge costs for district anyways. You reduce that by 5%, it's going to still get by $10,000. But they are a difference, so holding them steady. We know that the monies aren't going to go as far either because we get less for more, more for less. Yeah, whatever, do you want to go? Get less for more right now, so. But we held those steady in the budget to always, of course, the bummer to everybody out there, but. So that was kind of all the assumptions we made as going through. We are fine tuning these parts here, which are the next three slides in it. Some of them are pretty, they're predominantly already set. I mean, you look at your staff development and your operating capital, can those change depending on students' numbers? Yeah, those all, everything's tied, benched like to that right there. But those numbers are not going to change much on terms of the amounts. It's going to be that one in yellow right there as we're fine tuning the details of the budget. And specifically from the last few years, I'm getting everything probably to align correctly. Those numbers are changing, it's just because things weren't completely done, that turnover in the positions and so forth. So things have been missed or changed and not always counted for. And so that's the big one, along with all the changes you have made as a board and a district already. Just to give you that yellow, as I said last week to the earlier group, that that is around 200,000 right now already, so that's a positive. It's just kind of fluctuating everywhere, as Chuck and I have been going through it. And Cindy and I are going to be spending the next two days going through more personnel payroll stuff, so we'll see if we have any changes there. But that's, it's looking better. If you looked at this a few months ago, again, that was a minus, around 300,000 or so. Give or take, now it's a lot of plus 200,000, that's again from some of the reductions and choices we already made. And then from some of the, just getting things in line, so. The last page is just a continuation of the entire part that you've seen. There really hasn't been too much with that part besides the column that had yellow in it, so. Those are the 30,000 picture view, 30,000 foot view we have of the, of the budget right there. And that we brought with more detail, a little intro of what's going on in the district here in June. So if there's any certain things you would love to ask or talk about, I'm here or I guess Rhonda might be on the other side here.
Any other questions for a follow-up from the work session at all? You all good? Edwards, I know you were busy.
I was.
Oh, yeah, I got to get back to her part on that, yeah.
Is there any questions that you would like to pose real quick?
No, I was just curious more like if there were any major questions from the rest of the board during the work session? Any highlights, spotlights, things to consider, things to update on?
I can only, one thing, that you talked about the operating levy, which was talked at the work session. Mr. Hart was here for that, that's about 1.53, 5, 4 million dollars. That he went into those details that will be in further discussion looking forward.
And also our opportunities for renewal or asking?
Yeah.
For less or more or nothing?
And when and why?
Yes, good. Excellent. So any other questions for Mr. McNulty on primary budget? Okay.
Thank you. I know that's not an action item until next month, so. Talk to you again then.
We'll come back to that.
On the website.
Yes. Next item is the HR 403 briefing, is that, Rhonda, would that be you?
Cindy. In collaboration.
All right, Cindy is here, excellent.
So why Cindy gets situated, pardon? Why Cindy Agapinski, her payroll coordinator gets situated? This is an item that is being, being brought back to the board. We had a conversation last fall about our 403B offerings. And there was quite the discussion about possibly consolidating or, or moving or switching vendors. And so we went back to the drawing board and Cindy, I don't want to speak for her, but she did some research for us and is coming back around to kind of close that loop on that discussion. Ms. Agapinski?
Thank you, Board. So we brought in the 403B vendors a couple of weeks ago.
She was on the, what's her name?
All right, so we brought in the 403B vendors a couple of weeks ago. At least we tried to bring them all in. So we managed to get the financial advisors for Ballack and Voya to come in and meet with the teachers. I met with all three providers that came in and asked them questions. We reviewed the fee structures, looked at how that was all set up. They are all willing to do onsite presentations for us to educate our teachers and staff a little bit more on how 403Bs work. And basically, we have been at the same fee structure since 2011 when we went out for RFP with, with the providers. So as of right now, we're going to stay with Ballack and Voya as we have been and with the same financial providers. And power, which is how this all came up, is MMA presented last September to the board and wanted to consolidate all of our plans into one. We have not received the service that we would expect from a financial advisor for our staff. So with that being said, I contacted Katie Williams, who was our previous Empower financial advisor. Met with her this afternoon. She has agreed to come back as our financial advisor for Empower. So we signed the paperwork this morning, or this afternoon. As soon as Empower has her registered as our financial advisor again, we will get her in here to meet with the teachers. That is what I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for taking it on and researching and digging in. And I know our staff that were affected by this change are going to be very appreciative for what you've done. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comments, Cindy, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Very good. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, 7B, facilities update. Mr. Lor, please join us.
Might have to bear with me a little bit because I don't think I've ever given a slide presentation before. I might as well, I was going to say I got places to spend the wine I have in yellow. So I got called in like three times today to get my PowerPoint changed by a couple of people. So it might not match, but we'll do the best we can. Plus I was told I got a certain amount of time. So thank you for having me tonight. So let's see, is that it? Hey, here we go. All right. Quickly, so just to start off with, Principal Rosetta, a lot of other people covered a lot of the slides that I was going to talk about. So we'll just go right over them. Secured entries, we're having a pre, first pre-con meeting Friday to secure contractors, make sure they're all lined up, everything supplied. That's going well, right on task. Nobody has any concerns with supplies for secured entries. The only one that still sticks out there is card readers that we ordered three and a half months ago. So they're still, they're starting to get, they're starting to see an influx of more, so hopefully we get that. That's the biggest thing that we're concerned for right now, but they're on track. Operations storage at the high school, they call it. Mr. Pratt and I got together mid-last week, had some good conversation. Got things kind of, kind of was, we were trying to figure out who was doing what. And we anticipated each of us were doing something and we weren't doing either, so. It was hard for me to have the coaches go through their stuff because I don't see the coaches view of the coaches. And he thought I was dealing with storage units, so we got together by a little push from one of our supervisors. But we are on task right now. We're in good shape. We got things, Dan's got things organized for the coaches, get them organized before the end of the school year. So we're not have to have them come in at the end of the, you know, here in the summer. He reached back out to our storage company that we originally got a quote with to make sure they were cooperative purchasing, and they are. So we are getting a little better pricing than we originally did, which is good. I know, I think he's having them come out Wednesday to start looking at 507 and see what we're doing there and start that process. So operations storage is going good, it's back on track. Asphalt work, man, do we have problems. There's some cars we're still looking for in some of the parking lots of the elementary, bus garage. But the benefit to it all is we didn't spend all of our abatement bonds last year. So we have some carryover for abatement bonds. We've gotten some pricing so far, some quotes, and I'm waiting for another quote to come in, but. But the quotes that we're kind of looking at doing, doing some grinding up and re-milling and tearing out and completely redo, are coming in with, coming in under the money that we have available. So it's looking good that we're gonna be able to do what we want to. It won't be a complete total bus garage renovation, but we'll get a lot of it done. I mean, it'll look good. The chip and seal that was on task along the road from the bus garage to up to the back parking lot is, that actually was already signed last year. So that's in place with the current spending, so that'll get done. So asphalt, we, you know, had one of our guys, Chris, go around and fill the bigger holes with some gravel that we had. And then I had my, two of my college kids back and they went around today and filled some of the other bigger holes around the bus garage with gravel. Just until we get the asphalt work started. Hot mill plants just opened like two and a half weeks ago, so it's not, everything's behind it. So as soon as we get that final quote in, we'll get that going. Got some sidewalk, sidewalk work, just got, you know, just, we had bad weather, we had heaving and tear out and busting. This is the most snow that I've had to deal with in Rockford since I've been here. And we ran out of places to put it. We had to have people, we had to have our snow people come in and push it, dump it in the gardens, over here at the middle school. So it was a lot of snow and it cost us a lot, a lot of money to have it moved around. But that's what caused some of our sidewalk problems. Signage, signage was a, we've kind of worked, I've been working with a signage person that we've had do some work for us at the high school. And for some reason, he hasn't been responsive, so I had to switch gears and go to a different signage company. But we're looking at some good signage for the high school. And then also some signage throughout the front of the DO to separate the DO from the middle school. We're looking at putting a sidewalk up so parents and students don't come into the DO entrance. We want them to go to the secured entrance up at the middle school. So we want to make sure there's enough signage out front that says district office only, middle school up to the front. And then we need to solve the high school a little bit more where the auditorium is, where the commons goes from the other way, where the restrooms are. So we're gonna do a little bit of work there too. And that's part of the summer project, part of these capital bonds. Field work, field work we're always struggling with because the field's getting used so much. The last two years has really been tough because we've been just in a terrible drought. And we need to do some work with, and I call them lips on the field, is where the egg line goes against the grass. After you go around so many times, it creates a lip and the ball will jump. And we really need to get in there and cut a path of sod around the outside. But when we're in a drought situation and some of the middle school fields don't have water, the outfield part, it's hard to plant or to get sod to grow. So kind of held off on that a little bit. Our goal is to do a little more work on that this year. So, 'cause they need a little TLC. I'll talk a little bit more about fields and stuff in another slide. RCC, I know the facility committee's been, excuse me, involved with a lot of the RCC remodeling. So flooring, painting, curtains, moving the one scoreboard, Dan's floor. I think it's getting a complete overhaul. Everything is so far on schedule. I'm battling it out with two people, two companies right now with curtains. The same company that's doing the flooring came in a little bit higher than another company. But I would prefer that the company that's doing the flooring do our curtains. Because I don't want to get into that fight, even if it costs a couple thousand dollars more. I don't want to get into that fight where it says, well, they drove on our floor and now the warranty's off. So that's, I'm getting his final price tomorrow from the flooring guy. So I told him he needs to come in with a better price because I want them to do it. But everything is still on course, a little bit delayed, a little bit. But the only, the other reason I don't want to go up one of the other companies is he said he can't get any till September 1st and that's too late. I did have a conversation with Melissa and Van. They're okay with it, the pricing that we were saving. But then this other company with the flooring, hopefully comes down, he's not leaving tonight, but I have a price for him. So, but RCC's in good shape, ready to go. The other reason I put capital bonds budget on there was I want to just let the board know that our wants and needs are more our needs than wants. We want to make sure that we stay within our capital funding, so we're gonna keep a very close eye on that. While I work with ICS, gotta talk to Mike a little bit about how we're gonna do it. But they want to see all the quotes first, they're gonna approve all the quotes. Once the preos, the quotes get approved, then cut POs and then it goes back and forth. So we, Ryan really wants to keep an eye on the budget. He doesn't want to overspend, he wants actually to leave a little letter just in case. So that's gonna be a very fine tune. We just want to assure the board that we have a good system in place for that. Gymnastics, water leak, that wall, it's looking worse and worse. I had a couple of people look at it, including Ryan's brought in another vendor. We had, when our whole blacktopping company, bus loop people were out doing a walk through this spring new look. They looked at it because we were thinking about that we had to tear up that, dig up that side of the wall and do some more drainage or whatever. They actually found a couple, there's, in, in there's, behind the wall, there's a rock system that's supposed to help with the drainage that was placed before I got in here. They dug up the wall and bought a group that, anyway, one of the guys that was with Jason from New Look called down and one of them, I don't know, ten-inch pipes. He found two of the PVC pipes actually cracked. So there's some groundwater there. What's making the wall look terrible is someone, and Jessica, you probably know a little bit more history about this, but it's there's a coating of sheet rock mud and that's what's peeling off and wet. And it's, and from the people that know a little bit more about it feel that it's holding back the moisture and not falling off the wall. So what we're going to do is look at taking some of that off the wall. We're going to use a epoxy paint and try to seal the wall, dry it out, seal it, and see what it does. It's the cheapest route right now. I know we still need to keep it looking very nice, and that's my goal. We won't take all the mud off the hole all the way up because there's some nice letters, nice graphics and stuff. But our goal is to tear off some of it, dry it out, seal it and seal it up. We think we can do that without digging up the hole outside because that's gonna create a lot of expenses for the capital.
The pipe that has the crack in it, can they put like some sort of liner inside of that to keep it from leaking?
But it's actually, the funny part about that is it's actually water leaking into the pipe. So it's not the water leaking out of the pipe into the ground, there's so much water in the ground that's leaking into the pipe. So it's catching water someplace. One of the things that they are gonna talk about after we do the wall seal is if they need to take out that drain system because it's holding back the water. We did, the positive thing about it was with the bus loop in and the reading that we did up on the hill, we had a lot less water coming down into the parking lot, which created a lot less water coming towards the gymnastics gym. Now I think it's mostly just groundwater that hasn't dried up yet. So I'm thinking positive.
So just something for history sake and snatch, we might be able to fill it a little too. But from what I understand, when we did a bunch of work here, there's like an underground river running behind this building, underground. And there's an actual like holding tank for water because there was so much water that would come in the gyms. Like we had replaced the flooring with bond money and we had to, there was issues because of all the water and they had to, the drainage stuff. They did so much, they did a ton of work with that because of this underground water system?
Spring.
That is there, so.
Yeah, so ICS was involved with that original construction, so they have all the plans and everything, all that was all developed. And that's part of that storage tank. Where kind of the same thing they designed over at the elementary is where all the water comes down into this tank and then seeps down into the ground. They're hoping that they don't have to tear that out, but they're gonna come in with some cameras and check that out. So they want to more, they want to see more if we're getting water pushing this way to the building instead of that way. So a little transition there. We'll have to close it down for a little bit just to do some more investigating and some repairs. Hopefully it's the cheaper way instead of more expensive way. Turn the page.
Oh, before you do the page.
Yes.
So signage, I don't know what all of the signs you're thinking about. But the one question that I get asked all the time, I'm walking in the parking lot at the, by the commons in the high school. People don't know where to find the softball fields that are way up beyond her. And so that is the most frequent wayfinding that I find myself giving to people. And it's like, well, then you have to go out this way and around that building and you know where the bus, the bus? Yeah, it's a big, and they're, they don't know because they're not from here. So it's hard to get people up there. So I don't know what a good solution is for that, but just, I, that's a wayfinding that I'm asked constantly is.
From the high school to have signage that takes them there.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's, you know, on the out, I mean, I leave that up to you all. But that, I just wanted to lift up like that's, I, that's the one that I'm asked the most about is how do you find the softball fields?
I agree with you that it's, if you just stand there, it's, especially on weekends and tournaments and all that stuff, it's just constant. They park, they walk halfway across the parking lot, where's the, where's the softball fields? Oh, you gotta go all the way around this way to see a big old pin building. Go around that and then go up there.
Yeah, and then it's better from way up there, so, yeah.
So, I'm thinking, you know, and I know it needs to be addressed. We're gonna stay a little bit, we're gonna stay a little more on the inside, but I know outside needs some addressing.
Yeah.
And I know that needs addressing because that drives me crazy.
Well, it's just, you know, it's part of how welcoming environment, right?
It's frustrating for the people that come and it's not welcoming.
Yeah.
And then, as I think about it more and more, is it a map that goes on the sign that says, here's where the softball field's located? I don't know, I'm asking, I'm asking.
Ask the people.
That's the sign people, but something needs to take place that is.
But that's, that's just, I wanted to lift that up. That's the one that I constantly am asked.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, that's being looked at. I still think we need to show those.
Mr. Birdie did.
I picked up, I was up there, I'm out with her all the other night and there's two girls coming down from the softball. And they're halfway down the parking lot and I said, and I was, I was in one of the theaters or whatever and I said, you guys going down to school? And she said, yeah. I said, you wanna ride? And she was like, yeah. It's like, yeah, I'll move over far enough so you guys can get in. And so they really, really appreciate it. So I imagine you tired by the time you get back up there.
It's good training.
It's pretty good job. Future projects, we're gonna be looking at bidding roofing projects at the elementary, June, July, for next year. Why so early? So we can get ahead of the game on everybody else and hopefully we get a better price. We're going to, what we're looking to do is change roofing designs. Right now we have a current rubber roof out there. And we're gonna go with a build-up roof, which is a better roof, which we feel that we can get a better price on. Especially if we go out at this time. So came in over budget last time. Our goal is to get a little better price because we were under the gun and people were full already for the year. And so I'm sure ICS will be coming back for bidding approval. The architect is currently designing a program of what needs to be done and how we need to. So that's just a heads up. Hot water replacement at the middle school, the reason I bring this up is because I had to work with a couple of different companies because it's really hard to get a hot water heater in the boiler room of the middle school. It's so small and so tight. It's like almost cheaper to cut a hole in the cafeteria to bring one in, but we're not going that route. It's just gonna be expensive to replace the current one that is out. We only have one running. No longer you can get parts for it. So they're going to try to make some parts so we have a backup. But we'll, we'll have to put in a new one, however that's determined, we're still in the process. It's just a tight, really small. Things to finish up, painting stripes on the bus loops. We still got some yellow lines to paint for the little types so they don't get past the curb. You know, paint the curb, this is still all a new looks payment that we, that we paid for. They need to paint the mathematics thing up here on this one up here. And then they have to finish the handrail on the steps over here. And then they would, then there's a couple of other smaller things. But striping and stuff is still, still has to happen, it's still under scope for both bus loops. We do need to add one stripe of bus loop for parking or the elementary, high school, because we missed one. Baseball light, so it's kind of been a problem because Musco's usually really good, you know, they're a good company. So it was not working last fall. They came out and actually they have little transmitting phones in there. And one of the phones they felt was bad, that communicates with them. And that's part of the whole warranty and stuff, it's something to be paid for. So they came out and replaced the phone. It worked for a little while last fall, put some, then it died again, put some defuses in it. It worked again and then it didn't. And then we got into winter and, well, we have it scheduled to come out early spring, but early spring was not really early. So then southern states got busy and, I mean, long story short, they're short on help. They're having, they were having a tough time getting Musco people out here to fix it this spring. When they could get out here, we still had snow. So as of now, they've hired a local company that, there's three local companies that are in Minnesota that they work with that have worked on their lights before. They've sent all this stuff to them that's possible and on with it. But the problem is they were supposed to come today to work on it. We got almost an inch of rain over the weekend. And I called them and said, I don't want you on my baseball field because they gotta go up there with one of those big lifts. And they're just gonna tear up the field. And we got enough stuff going on up there. So I said, you gotta hold off. But we have a double header on Thursday night. He called me back and said, I rented the lift today, I can't get the lift till the 23rd. So I gotta tell Dan some bad news, that I don't know how we're gonna figure the, the double header. So I gotta tell Dan some bad news that I don't know how we're gonna figure the, the double header on Thursday night, but he can't get, he's gonna try to shop around, uh, to try to get a lift out here before Thursday, but he can't guarantee it. But there is, so there's three things that can run with it. The main wiring harness that goes up the hole, which is a pretty big task. It could be the bulbs that are causing the ballast to burn out. Or it could be two bulbs that are malfunctioning that keep popping the breakers. Everything else they've been able to troubleshoot online through their computer, but that's what they've determined so far. The only other thing I can do is, and there's only one way to get to that light, and that's cross the baseball field. Maybe I should talk to Dan. I'm just thinking out loud. Now maybe one of our local fire departments or somebody else has one of these big lights that you can put out. I don't know. We'll figure it out. I just wanna give you guys a heads up on that.
If you'd mind.
Turn page.
Sure. Um, for number three, that bus loop, not, nothing to do with the stripes, but I just wanna comment, um, I've driven around the campus from time to time and it is so cool to see kids playing out on that space over recess, playing basketball, playing whatever. It's just, it's bustling with activity between the high school and the middle school. That's usually where I see, I don't have a frame of reference for that middle school, but I'm, hopefully it's the same. But it's just awesome to see that it's not just a bus loop, but it's, um, it truly has turned into what feels like a multipurpose space. Um, and that was the vision, so it's just really, it's awesome. So, I'm just, I just wanna look at that.
Yeah, and utilizing them, that's really nice.
Yeah. I've even seen it on the weekends, you know, kiddos out doing whatever, playing hoops, you know, doing the, doing the things that they should be doing outside.
Yep.
So, it's nice.
They were, they were outside a lot today, that's for sure.
That's good. I bet people like that. Thank you.
Um, that's gonna go down here a little bit quick because, um, everybody else is covering the slides. I just want to bring attention to the board that the last couple of years, we've been successful and we've seen kind of become used for experiments, which is usually for equipment. And equipment includes any type of athletic equipment. Um, they're a little bit behind on the years and I know you're gonna go, why is 2021, 21, 22 up here? Because Superintendent Dean asked me the same question today. This reason is because we just got that piece of equipment like two months ago. The supply chain was so far behind that we were awarded, we were awarded the money for the equipment, but we couldn't get the equipment for over a year and a half. And we finally got the equipment. Same thing this year. This year, the 22, 23, they did it in the fall. But they actually didn't award the money until about January or February. And this year we got a pretty good chunk of change. This year we got 23,000. Thirteen of a thousand of it is for wrestling, for a mat, and 12 scoreboards and take down notes. We, in collaboration with, uh, Peter, Ma- Warren, Warren?
Maran.
Warren?
Maran.
Maran. We put in a bunch of stuff last fall, um, just to try to bombard them with stuff. This is what we got approved, which is probably the most I've seen us get for a long time. So, uh, just wanna make you aware that we did get some money for that. Downfall of it is, it's head in the county, we can't take it across the river. Be nice to use some of that money for, um, the fields over at the middle school. What this money comes from most, you probably know, is the Twins Field Tax. This year they changed it. This spring they also added arts and music grants to this whole picture. So, and I don't remember the cutoff, but it's here in May sometime. But I let Ms. Knight, who's a Menard, Mr. Menard know that there are grants up to 10,000 or 12,000 for arts and music stuff that they can apply for. So hopefully they will apply for as much as they possibly can, um, and get something, because it's a nice, it's a nice, um, having to get some extra equipment. Any questions with that?
Thank you.
Um, Ross Sports, um, last year I met with them and baseball, I should say, and they had laundry lists like a lot. So then they reached out to me, uh, a couple of them reached out to me this spring. And then we talked a little bit, emailed back and forth and came up with some ideas. We actually met one night in April on the middle school fields. Um, had a very good conversation, told them that, you know, on the school side, things are a little tight. Um, and I wanna, I wanna shout out to Michelle Byers because even though she's not around baseball, she came along to help with the stuff, how it works with softball. And one of the things she told one of the guys from around baseball was maybe since Jim doesn't have the money to buy an extra egg line, maybe you guys could find funding for a couple loads of egg line, which they did. And so, they got rained on a couple of weekends. They have a couple, another weekend, I think it's this weekend, they're gonna come and try to get some uh, work done. They asked if they could use some of our equipment. I said, absolutely. Um, they're gonna use an edger. We'll put the egg line in there for them once they get an edge and stuff. But, um, that was a good meeting. And then, uh, I met with Ross Softball last week, Monday night. And, um, and again, I wanna just speak for Michelle Byers. She put new dugouts on fields three and four. I don't know where she gets the money, but, um, they look really nice. They're not complete yet.
Tomorrow night?
What's that?
We'll finish them tomorrow night.
Yeah. But, they, I mean, they do know things. So we had a good meeting again of, they have very small things that they're asking for the district to put into. One of the things is just make sure the fields are straight and stuff. Uh, last fall, I, I think I mentioned it earlier this winter, that Rob Baseball did a really nice job on the softball field last, last fall. And it really looks nice this fall or this spring because of what we did. Um, just a shout out to Chris, one of our guys, Chris Larson. He works well with Rob. Um, we reached out to him. And sometimes Chris kinda throws back a little bit and says, no, we can't do that. Or how, how do you plan on, how do you expect us to do that? So I give him credit for seeing the best for both sides. Uh, so he works well with that.
Can I just ask a thing? The only clarification is that it wasn't Rob Baseball last year that did the baseball field. It was high school parents.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Of the high school program that did all the renovations.
You're right.
High school parents did that.
Trying to keep track of.
I know, but I wanna give credit where credit is due for the volunteers that are volunteering.
I get that.
Yeah, so that was all high school parents that did the varsity baseball.
And to be honest with you, if, if they didn't do that last fall, we're going to think it's nice and just, it really looks nice.
They did a good job.
They did a really nice job, especially, I love the idea of, and I'm trying to talk softball, we're doing it too. I love the idea of the artificial turf in the batting, in the batting cages.
Yeah.
It sold us weed, so nice.
And they could get in there early.
Yes.
So, and, and I will out, also add, Chris is awesome to work with from everything I've heard, so just kudos to your team. Takes a village.
All right, we're gonna go down hill from here because most of my stuff, oh, I need, I need to slide.
We have future facility needs to get through.
There's a different slide.
We already covered those.
I never did that, right? All right, so, I started, but what I wanted to do tonight was give you a one, three, five-year budget plan, but as I went through it, it just kept growing. So, I kinda summarized, and this is where I worked with Courtney and and Miss Dean of, of some of the things that we just need to summarize it. Cause in five years, we're gonna have a lot of needs financially. It's just got, I mean, if I would put something in for one year and three years, it's like, okay, then, no, we're not gonna get that done in one or three, three years, so they're gonna be pushed to five years maybe. So, what I'm saying is when the board decides that, or if they decide that we need for, a referendum for repairs and whatever they decide, there's a lot of needs because the buildings are getting older and equipment's getting older. Um, so some of those things you need to get repaired. And I'm still working on my one, three, five-year budget because I need to have that list. It may just turn into three, five, seven or three, five, ten. Just so, I think it's important that the school board knows the expenses that are needed to bring us back up into a good, uh, facilities. One of the things I drew on there was the bus infrastructure. Um, that is an old building. Um, eventually that is not, not a state of standing. I'm not saying it's gonna fall down next week, but I'm just saying it's an old tin building. Um, we have put some new doors on it. We've had to do some, quite a lot of welding to the frames to the building. Um, just because they're rusting out, so, you know, just something to think about. Is it something that, that's up there on the sheet? I'm just thinking about that. We may need to do something for the, the bus garage infrastructure eventually down the road. Um, because it's gonna turn into, since we leased it, it's gonna turn into a one hit. I got this one. Um, Mr. Was that, talk about the ship grant. Money for the ship grant, purchase supplies for the gardens. We're gonna put in a native garden. And then the next slide, I'm gonna show you kind of a layout of it. So the yellow is gonna be where the community gardens are gonna go, and that's where Community Ed is gonna be renting them out, I believe. Melissa said they have seven or eight people already in line for renting them. Um, and I'm gonna go ahead one page. So what we did is we bought the supplies. They had, the ship money has 1,500 or something like that. They bought the supplies, the high school woodshop kids are building the planters. They're on, they're done with about, um, five or six. And my goal is to have them completed this week or first part of next week. So we can get the, the community members in there so they can get going and growing because it's getting late. Um, down in the red box is, uh, we met with
Napak.
To, what is it?
Napak, N- Navy American.
Yep. So that area there is gonna be the native garden, um, where the red is. And that's gonna be, it's not gonna be a square box, it's more gonna be a circular one. And I have to meet with the gal that's gonna take care of it and operate it and stuff to determine how big of a circle she wants there. And that's gonna be put in more this summer than this spring. Um, then where the purple is, that's gonna be not all of it because they again only have so much money to spend. But that's where they're gonna put in native trees that go along with the native garden. So, uh, Jamie Matson's hunting that project down for trees and, and working with Paul W. And where we're gonna put them, how we're gonna put them and that type of stuff. So, that's coming together. That place is coming together pretty nice. By next school year, it'll really look nice. That page is done, that page is done. That page is done, that page is done. Oh, so just the last couple of things I want to do. Um, custodial services audit. I'm starting a custodial service audit, uh, throughout the district to make sure that we're maintaining our custodial services we need to for cleaning and upkeep for our students and staff. Um, and one of the companies is called the C-Cow. They come in and they've already done it. They already did it when I first got here. They came in and measured every room. Said what every room was in there and they're gonna redo it again a little bit, just do a lock group. But I wanna make sure everybody, custodial staff wise, is getting as much equal responsibility and we're also making sure that we take care of our clients, which is our s- community, our teachers, our students the best that we can with the people that we have. Um, so that's gonna take place this summer, this spring, this summer. I sent out a survey to the elementary teachers today. Um, and then I'm gonna send out a survey to middle school and high school teachers, and then probably by the end of this week, first part of next week. Just asking some general questions, so I get some feedback to give to them. Um, Brian recap, uh, it worked, honestly it worked really well for, like, I was, I was really concerned about the steps back here. With kids falling on the steps and all that other stuff, but we weren't being able to keep a point. That stuff worked great this year. Um, we never really got caught off guard with it. We actually purchased a larger machine that goes in the back of the pickup. And we're able to do some entryways so the cars would pull it into the parking lot a little bit more instead of using as much salt. Um, we've also switched, I would say offenders or cooperative people. You see it from the city, now we're getting it from the neighboring school district for the same price. So we don't have to drive an hour and a half one way to get it. Um, they're very willing to come to us. Uh, and I think part of that is because we have their kids in the district. Uh, got work there, so. And again, utility expenses, Mike already covered that. They are, um, really gone through the roof this year. And it's really eaten a bunch of it up pretty quick. And then, as you may have seen, I, and I sent Superintendent Dean an email, I think over the weekend or Friday or something. We received an email from our heat control company that like everybody else in that business, they're behind a little bit and you'll see that we're, we're starting to grow a lot of yellow flowers. And, uh, we either got sprayed last weekend or we sprayed this weekend, one or the other, I guess.
I'm sure the elementary teachers appreciate the luchas they get every recess.
There's a lot of flower here.
Send them out.
Tell them to pick them from the root though. Let's study the root system.
Any questions for Mr. Lur? Nothing? Mr. Lur, appreciate it. It's a big operation. Lots of, lots of ropes to keep going, so thank you. Appreciate all your time and effort on that. All right, uh, moving on then. We are going into seven C, board meeting schedule. Um, during our meeting, um, in our, on our prep meeting, Ms. Dean shared with us that they had the Monday schedule. Um, Ms. Edwards and I also asked, because we had talked about this at one other time, about the possibility of exploring Wednesdays for meetings as well. Um, so in front of you are two different board schedules, a Monday schedule and a Wednesday schedule. So Ms. Dean, I don't know if you wish to.
Uh, thank you, Board, Chair Courtney. No, what you have in front of you is two separate possibilities. Um, and that's to, to repeat what Chair Courtney shared, but one is just your, um, similar to what we, the format that we have now, which maintains a work session, um, each month with odd number months, um, a standalone even number, uh, what I call stacked work session, similar to tonight where we have a 45-minute work session prior to the regular board meeting. Um, and then of course the opposite month, like I said, it's a separate meeting, which is a two-hour meeting. Um, but there's two proposals for consideration. One is to continue with the Monday evenings with a couple of variations, usually during January, February, when we have Martin Luther King's holiday and President's Day. But the second proposal is shifting the board meetings to Wednesdays. Still maintaining the work session schedule, but just setting those regular board meetings on Wednesdays instead of Mondays. And so you have two, um, schedules to consider and we're prepared to move forward, forward with item one.
So on that, uh, consideration, uh, one of the things that, that Ms. Edwards and I had discussed. So, on that consideration, uh, one of the things that, that Ms. Edwards and I had discussed was. The great deal of school district conflicts that occur Monday nights. Right, there's, there are many events that happen Monday nights and the board. Meeting on top of that then is just another thing in Wednesdays. Yes, we understand that there are some families that, that do religious obligation, things like that within our community. But there aren't. Conflicts as much with school activities. Myself personally. I've missed many of my children's events over the last several of years. Coming to this thing. Uh, tonight was one. Ms. Edwards does the same as, as well as you all miss items as well, so. Up for discussion, up for consideration. The opportunity to either remain where we are on Mondays. And I do know, moving to Wednesdays. School employees say this sets up a really long week with a Monday night lasting till nine whatever o'clock. Makes a long week, and moving it to Wednesdays, it's a little more palatable for the remainder of that week as well. So, as I'm getting some smirks from the, uh, the gentleman in the back.
I have one question or statement. I am indifferent when it comes to Mondays or Wednesdays, so I will. It doesn't. Involve me so much, but, um, one thing that I did notice, um, if we switch to the Wednesday schedule, that the June meeting falls on another holiday. So, that would need to be changed.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Nealon. Any other comments about either or?
Wednesdays do not work as well for me. Um, I do have. Religious stuff that I do on Wednesday. And also, my husband has other work that would. He won't be at home to watch my kids. So, which is a little bit less of a concern, and maybe by next year, my oldest is old enough to handle that for me. But they, they don't, they do not work as well for me. And a couple in. In, in the summer this, I mean, these next couple would not work for me in July and August. Um, I can't remember which ones they are. After that, I could probably finagle it to make it work. But they do not work as well for me.
So, my concern is, um, in the future, is future board members having kids that maybe they do have religious commitments. That isn't like once maybe. This month and maybe three months from now, it's every single month. On the Wednesday, like it interferes every single month, no matter what it interferes. So, that would be my concern was switching it to a Wednesday. Myself, when my kids were that age, I was teaching on Wednesday nights. Confirmation, so it wouldn't have worked for me, and when I did have board meetings, I had to find someone to sub for me so that I could be at a board meeting, and I made it work. But that's my concern moving forward.
Yeah, I think this, I think my concern is. Building a board schedule that isn't around the activities of the district. So, um, for example, if the board is meeting and there's a play at the high school or there's something musical, like whatever, something going on. We're sitting in a board, in a boardroom, not taking in whatever that activity is in our district because we're choosing to meet on a Monday. So, that does, it's true, and it's happened, and we've done it. And there's a, there's, just one second. There's other events that occur as well, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. But our district does not schedule much to occur on Wednesdays so that children, kids. Can participate in whatever they do, you know, religiously or otherwise on Wednesday evenings. So, I think that, um, that the, the concern and the issue is. Should we be building a board schedule around the activities of the district? And that's, I think that's the question on the table. And while some might be missing a event every month. Similarly, if you have kids that are active in activities, you're missing an event every month too. So.
And I do know that it pulls a day away because Ms. Dean, I believe you have a calendar committee meeting where you all, like basically. There are board meetings on Monday and we cannot schedule. You try to avoid things.
You do.
Which limits opportunities.
Correct.
But then, like we had curriculum fair, I believe, one year on top of a board meeting.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, so. Okay.
I mean, this is just for me personally. Uh, my kids' religion, the religion that we go to, uh, the parents also participate in. So, it's not, for me, it's not just my kids being there. I'm, I have to be there too. So. Yeah, I don't, it. To me, the, the school schedules around Wednesdays for religious purposes, so. To not, to say we're not going to schedule the board meetings around it for religious purposes doesn't really make sense if. I mean, if the parents find that that's an important thing, then that's. An important thing for, I mean, for the parents too, so. Yeah, and. And obviously, my point of view comes from the fact that Wednesdays just don't work well for me.
Any other comments? Very good. There is a. Action necessary for a Monday or a Wednesday, uh, board meeting. And points taken on, um, other people's oblig- obligation with their children. For Wednesday evenings as well as scheduling around district opportunity. With public school to go to Wednesdays, so there's motion in place, or sorry, uh, options in place. And. I don't know if there's any other discussion?
Is this a required action tonight?
I don't believe we have to take action tonight. If there's no motion, it moves over into the next month.
I mean, I'm just asking the district, is it a required action tonight or? Is there, I mean?
There's no reason that this thing has to be accepted and published this evening, correct?
No.
We have opportunity to set. Okay.
My preference would be to try to get to consensus at some point in time and not have it feel like.
Agreed.
Contentious, and so I think it's.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I feel like we could.
We could debate it all night and not.
We could debate all night, or we could actually. Come together and figure out something that would work for both rather than.
So.
Tonight making a decision when we haven't, and we don't need to waste anybody else's time.
So, then is there an opportunity to bring this forward at a work session where we can have further discussion?
Let's do that.
Very good.
I think so.
Excellent, so we will.
Done.
Move on from this agenda item?
Thank you.
Excellent, and that will be, uh, something for us to talk about at our next work session. Thank you, guys, for offering that up, both, uh, both sides. Looking at the next items, D, E, F, G, H, and I are all second reads of our handbooks. And Ms. Dean, I'm not sure if you're prepared to present on D, E, F, G, H, and I.
Yes, Chair Gordy, um. Well, we can do a couple of things with these, with these items, given the, the time this evening. There are not many revisions from the first read. Um, they're summarized on the cover sheet. And so, may I suggest to the board that possibly, um, fold on these handbooks as a slate. Versus individually, um, that is an option for the board to, to consider.
I, I'm ready to make a motion.
So, from the, from the first we read.
Just a thought.
Ms. Dean, were there any, uh, questions that had come back?
Um, there was one.
Or changes?
Well, there was one change, um, made to the high, or to the, um, staff handbook, no, I'm sorry. The parent handbook related to regalia that is worn as at graduation. I know the high school educates families and, and kids their senior year. But, um, and of course, when that information goes out, it's April, May, when they're preparing for graduation, and so we wanted to put that information. In the handbook, just to have it, um, call it out in the handbook, and so everyone sees it way prior to graduation. And then, of course, provide it, um, in the information that we give to our graduates in April and May. So, that was addition, um, to the parent handbook.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions on that? No? So, with that then, Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the slate of handbooks, including the RAS, parent and student handbook. The reams staff handbook, the, um, middle school staff handbook, and high school staff handbook, galaxy handbook, and the early childhood handbook.
Excellent.
All in one.
So, for the record, you are making a motion, an individual motion on D, E, F, G, H, and I. Very good, and we, any further discussion for that? Excellent, so there is a motion on the floor, and a second from Ms. Nealon. Any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is for individual approval for each of those items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? And letters. I gotta go back. D.
Through five.
F, G, H, and I have been approved individually by that motion and vote. Thank you. And with that, that brings us to the close of our, um, business. If there are any staff members that wish to go, please do. Except for the superintendent. Excellent. Uh, we will move on to, uh, work session, so announcements of the next work session of the Board of Education is Wednesday, June twenty-first, five o'clock, District Office. And regular meeting on Wednesday, June twenty-first, six thirty in the District Office. We will move on to board and committee updates. Ms. Dean, we'll have you go first. What? Yes!
No, 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 no.
Mixing it up. All right, who's ready then?
I am ready.
All right, get her done.
Well, first of all, my regular reports, um, continue to meet with ICS, um, pretty much every week. And continue because of our discussions with, with possibly renewing a levy, have had multiple conversations with PMA, uh, Michael Hart and company. Attend my annual meetings of AMSD and Wright County and Northwest Suburban, but a couple of other things that I'd like to highlight. Get in there, Ms. Dean. Couple of things I'd like to highlight from the last, uh, board meeting. Uh, the first one, I actually thought I had mentioned at the last board meeting, but I looked back on my calendar and it was actually two days after the board meeting. But, um, back in, uh, late April, the Air Force band played at the high school. And it was not, you would think the band, you know, first chair clarinet, you know. No, they performed a concert. And it was, we had students there from reams to, to seniors, to veterans. It was a phenomenal concert. Would love to have them back again. I told Mr. Menard, we gotta get those, get them into the high school. And they sang everything. It was Prince, it was Taylor Swift, great concert. Also attended the STEM showcase last month. By all accounts, it was probably the best showcase that the middle school has, um, has put on. It was just a great turnout. Uh, the le- the weather was a little soggy and maybe that's because we were inside, maybe that's why it felt so full. But it was just a great turnout, and the kids had a great time, and parents were just so appreciative of, of being able to get back in our, get back in our buildings. And walk around and just see the, the phenomenal things that our, our kids are doing. Just last week, attended the Students of Excellence, uh, banquet up in St. Cloud, and again, hi, um, recognizing and honoring. Some of our, our, our greatest accomplishments of our students. Following that, if you can follow that, um, had the Athena Award banquet last week, another phenomenal event. I tell you, when you leave that event, you feel like you did nothing during your high school career. Because these gals, their pedigrees in terms of not just their GPA, and not just their, their athletic accomplishments. I mean, we're talking, you know, six sport captains, six-year captains and just three sport athletes, but they also have jobs. They also have hundreds of hours of volunteer service. I mean, these girls are just so well-rounded and just, just phenomenal human beings. And so, the Athena Award was just another highlight. And then just last week, I know we, we had some conversation about, um, the finance committee not, uh, wanting to reschedule the meeting. Because the city of Rockford dedicated the new veterans memorial at, at, from, uh, at Central Park. Which is a phenomenal, it's a beautiful memorial. If you haven't just stood there and take it in, it's just, it's just a feeling. The one thing that I noticed when I was there that I had never noticed before being at that end of the park, and I guess maybe because I never ventured, ventured down to that end. But as you're standing there at the memorial, if you look to the west. You can see the cemetery. And I had just never seen that. From that angle before. So, just, again, if you haven't spent any time just standing there, stand there. And take it in, because it was a great, great, um, memorial to our veterans. Thank you, Chair Gordy.
That's excellent. Thank you, Ms. Dean. Ms. Hillstrom, would you mind?
Um, so, I had the finance committee meeting, um, I don't know, the beginning of May sometime. Followed immediately afterwards by, uh, the, uh, teacher award selection meeting. That was a lot of fun. And then, some other things that I did, uh, this, I went to the STEM showcase also. I went to, uh, I got to help out on grandparents' day, and that was super fun. They did a great job. Decorating the gym and making it look extra special. And they had student ambassadors bringing grandparents from the office to the gym, and they were giving them little mini tours. And I heard so many, so many compliments from the grandparents about that. And then, uh, I also, I also got to help at, uh, to, the teacher appreciation lunch on Friday, and that was a lot of fun too, because I got to. See a bunch of teachers, so it was, it was really fun, so that's it.
Excellent.
See, that's why I need to go last, because I forget how.
The, I took part in helping set up and, um, hanging out with our district office staff on District Office Appreciation Lunch Day. That was awesome. I had two chamber meetings since the last meeting. One was a happy hour and one was the luncheon just last Thursday. The luncheon last Thursday was awesome. The, the second in charge guy, Lieutenant of Wright County, um, gave us some insights on safety and security and different businesses for. Different cities that he goes to and places that he goes to. And then we also got to hear at the chamber meeting from our robotics team as well as our, um, DECA kids. So, that was, I'm really, really glad I went to this one. Then I did, a couple of weeks ago, I did the MSBA Phase Four course up in St. Cloud, so I have completed four.
Nice, congratulations.
It's huge.
Good job. That's great.
We had a, a finance committee meeting and then the award selection committee meeting. I'm still involved with Safe Routes to School, volunteering with that three or four times a week, and I've bought some plants from the greenhouse. And that's about it for me.
Excellent. Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, so, official board business, uh, facilities committee, there have been two since the last time we met. We spent some time, um, in the RCC space to look at space and striping and all of that. With, um, Mr. Pratt and Ms. Joseph as the key users and leaders of that space, so that was really good. Looking at things like, you know, how do we optimize and maximize that, that floor space? Really challenging, I think, the district to use this as a blank canvas right now, because it is our opportunity to do so. Like, we don't just need to replace it exactly how it was because it's always been that way. So, I think I really appreciate, um, both Mr. Pratt and Ms. Joseph's collaboration with one another, things like. You know, for the community, do we need more pickleball spaces as an example? How might we ensure that we've got optimized volleyball space? When our, like, high school and middle school athletics are in season, are we optimizing the, the court? When our, like, high school and middle school athletics are in season, are we optimizing the, the court spaces? And then, by the way, are we protecting our walkers in a way to allow multiple users of that space at the same time? And what does that look like? So, I just really appreciate, and I think part of our role has been just like, no really, like, like, this is a blank canvas, like, to the best of the board is authorized. Really, this is, we're not going to be replacing floor all the time, so, like, take this as your opportunity to really use that. So that was, that's been very fun. Also, just really, similarly, Mr. Lauer talked a little bit or highlighted storage and, and some of those issues that, that we have. So I appreciate Ms. Dean with, from a project man, making sure that we are managing from a project management perspective to get all of these things done. This, there's a lot that is going to be happening in a short period of time, so making sure that we're leveraging our ICS partners as a project manager of all of this, and then using our content experts as content experts. So, so that's, I think that's good. So Facilities Committee, those are kind of the updates there. Again, really happy to hear conversations about the, the asphalt and whatnot, because I, I mean, again, you do large abatement bonds and people see the good, and then they drive in the back and it's like, oh, we didn't finish the project. So, intentionally so because of the bus loop, but now we gotta finish the project and get that nice and smooth, so that's good. Board meeting prep with Mr. Gordy and Superintendent Dean, and then just Award Selection Committee as well. Which is fun to be back in that group again, because it's been a few years. Just, and then unofficial, just being a person in the district, attended band concerts, high school sporting events, you know, out and about in the community in many different ways, it's a fun time of the year right now, just with the energy and enthusiasm, so. Yeah, and graduation's right around the corner. I, I blinked and this year kinda went.
Well, just as a reminder, Wednesday night.
Awards night.
Award ceremony.
Yep.
All day.
So, those are my updates.
Excellent, thank you, busy, busy. Ms. Johnson, you want to go last, or you want to go now?
I can go right now, I have it here.
All right, go ahead.
Masico meeting, something just for us to know. The US Supreme Court made a decision that upends decades of law requiring parents to first bring student disability legal claims against districts through state-administered due process hearings. So formerly, parents were not permitted to file ADA or Section 504 disability discrimination lawsuits in federal or civil courts until IDEA due process procedures were exhausted. But there was a recent decision, Perez versus Sturgis, where they ruled that parents may now go directly to federal court to seek money damages by asserting discrimination claims under the ADA or Section 504 regardless of whether IDEA due process is sought or not. So, that can affect districts.
And it will.
Financially. Masico also is having some issues with the Pelsby criteria for licensing. So I'm, as Superintendent Dean mentioned me earlier, there's out on the EdPost website, there's over, almost getting close to 9,000 job posts right now needing education positions in our state. And by Pelsby changing this criteria, it's gonna make it even harder for our special ed positions to get filled. And it's just, yeah. I think those are kind of my main things from our Masico meeting, I just want you guys to be aware of. I was in signing diplomas, had the District Office Appreciation Luncheon. It was really fun to just be able to allow you guys to have that time together, but it worked out that everyone could make it, so.
And it was the perfect day.
It was, and it ended up being the perfect day, it actually was like the day for that. And then we were supposed to have a Policy Committee meeting and we have rescheduled that for June, so. That is it.
Yeah.
So, while I could not attend the recognition event, Jessica and I and Courtney, because she could let us into the building not to work. Spent a little time in the space the night before to have it organized and ready to go.
Well, it was super cute. Everybody loves your napkins.
Everybody loves your napkins.
Ties those with love, I'll tell you that. No, but I mean, it's fun, and again, like, just really, you know, gratitude to the District Office for all of the work and just keeping us humble and, and as a group, so, just super cool. Super cool, so.
Thank you, thank you. All right, AMSD Board of Directors meeting, couple MSBA virtual board chat conversations and, and sitting in there. Several facilities meeting.
I love those Friday chats.
Several facilities meetings. And, let's see, what else do I have? Oh, yeah.
Board prep.
Yeah, board prep, there you go. Northwest Suburban, we had interviews, so we had, oh, it was gross. We had several meetings, so Tim Kaski from Elk River and I had talked at length about the process and the procedure and negotiations for contracts for the new Northwest Suburban Director. We had to scramble and call during selection of who we were going to interview, because we didn't have quorum at first and we had to find someone and call them in to get interview, approve the slate of candidates. Then we had another meeting the next day to say, all right, we're going to approve committee, so in case we don't have quorum for interviews. So we did that, and then we finally had the interviews and we selected, we had quorum, thank God, barely. Yeah, four. Well, Fridley was hiring, so their person was busy, so I get it. But anyway, we hired the literacy curriculum and avid coordinator from the Minneapolis Public School District. Comes with a very wide range of experiences from working with the Southeast Cooperative with literacy coordination. And avid coordination in the Rochester School District actually, and was curriculum director, CNI and assessment at Zambroda. Mesim, whatever you call it, whatever, yeah. So that, so, and we just finished our negotiate, Tim and I just finished up the negotiations on that contract as well. So that's sealed and done, which is good. So those were basically my board things. Yeah, sideways things, was able to be the person with, with the keys during prom for, to help, in the morning, to help open up the building to get it set up for prom decorations.
I forgot prom, too. I wanna go, I need a redo, I need a redo, I'm so busy.
Yeah, and then so grand march, so here in the morning for grand march setup, and then here at night to make sure it was cleaned up and all the stuff got picked up and locked down, by that time was done.
The grand march was, was so good.
I heard that.
And it was.
I say leave it in the auditorium, the girls just sparkle, it's just.
It was great, it was with the lighting and all that stuff, and I know that there's plans for the school to continue working on grand march.
It was just so well done.
Yes, I went to the FFA State Convention to see our kids get some awards, which was great. And down at Mariucci, that was, and then softball games, obviously, and a couple track meets and some other stuff. So that's my update.
The ground torch is passing.
Yep, it's going on. Going down, yep, track that box, so, excellent, so that's it, anyone else with last words? Very good, that means the last item is for recess of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, first and a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Edwards, first and second discussion, all in favor? Post eight twenty, sorry, nine twenty-nine. Thank you. And Dean, you are off by six minutes, seven minutes.